All right, looks like it's seven o'clock, so we do need to start our meeting. I see not everybody, so I'm not sure. We have Dean and do we have Sue? Yes, Sue's there. It's not now, Peter, Ron.
I'll provide the flag.
Excellent, I'm good if you do. Can please stand and say the pledge allegiance to Dean's flag there?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to read our public school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemonster public.
Oh, no, no, no.
Could we ask that everybody is muted, please? The school committee represents the needs of all Lemonster Public School students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemonster. Having said that, I do want to just let the public know that we decided this format for this meeting, a Zoom meeting, because we can be live. We heard very clearly from the public that they wanted our meetings to be live. Unfortunately, we were not able to secure a room that would allow LA TV to film us and do so in a live fashion. We also did not have the infrastructure for all of us to meet in person and have each our own computers plugged in to partake in a in-person Zoom meeting. So a conscious effort was made to make this meeting in particular as live and available to folks, given we know that there's some controversial topic, you know, later on in our meeting. In the future, we have been able to secure the City Hall until such time as a school committee room is being orchestrated and done in the Gallagher Building. So I just wanted to let folks know why this decision was made to go through this format. The other thing is we are entering the open forum section of our meeting. It's important for everyone to be respectful of varying viewpoints. We know that everybody's not going to agree. There is no, you know, really right or wrong answer. Everyone has personal feelings, and I just wanted to make sure that folks know that there is a two-minute limit for your comments. And Christine, our secretary, will let you know when your time has run out. We ask people to be respectful of the time, so that everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity to do so. And with that, if anybody else other than LA TV is recording this, you need to announce yourself now and let. Okay, and was that done by us or by somebody else? Do we know? Steve, was that you?
That was me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And just if anybody else is recording it, you just need to announce yourself. Having no one do so thus far, we will open up the open forum for comments. I did not get a list of folks wanting to speak, so I'm just going to ask, you know, for people to take turns. So if someone would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself, announce your name and address for the record, please. Eileen, Mr. Rinkowski has made a comment in the chat, so he would like to speak. Okay, please go for it, Greg.
Thank you, Greg Rinkowski, 16 Vista Ave.
Greg Rinkowski, 16 Vista Ave. Dr. Yvonne Maldonado of Stanford University. Fact, and I quote, "Children's hospitals are currently dealing with bed shortages, not because of the Delta variant, but for issues indirectly related to COVID, including mental health problems stemming from social distancing, remote learning, and mask wearing that directly cause anxiety, depression, panic attacks, and suicidal ideation." Mark Whitechuck, CEO of Children's Hospital Association. Fact, and I quote, "These kind of indirect impacts of COVID have actually been a much bigger volume impact on pediatric intensive care capacity than the direct count of COVID kids." You have two options tonight. One, vote to mandate masks, of which you have no right to do in law or in equity, sow discord, and continue to fail our most vulnerable children, adding to their already seemingly insurmountable psychological, emotional, physiological, and behavioral growth that has been scientifically proven to last into adulthood. Or two, vote for parents' choice by recommending masks, thereby proving to this community that you leave your political bias aside, show great leadership, can bring this community back together, bring back trust in your ability to lead us during difficult times, and most importantly, begin the slow yet essential process of rehabilitating our children's psychological, emotional, and behavioral well-being. You have two choices. Which one do you choose? I pray that you put our children first and do not fail them, our community, and frankly, yourselves.
Okay, thank you. The next person I saw in the chat, there were several people who signed up, so I will call on you, Joshua Klaus.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Klaus. I reside at 218 Central Street, Ward 3. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I thank you as the entity you are and, of course, combined with the individual work each of the committee members do, moving our values forward. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our school superintendent, Paula Deacon, and her administration for their continued advocacy, hard work, and compassion. She makes Betsy DeVos look like chewed gum on the bottom of our kid's shoe. I have submitted my full written testimony in its entirety prior to this meeting for the public record, because I know this time is lamented. But I am here tonight to speak in support of a mask mandate in our schools. However, I do not support a required COVID-19 vaccination, no different than any other immunizations. I encourage you to reference the attached sample policy that I researched and found that was published on August 10, 2021, from the Mass Association of School Committee. It is a proposed mask mandate requirement. Customize it immediately. Vote immediately, so all of our children, families, and staff are safe. I think the following speaks for itself, and I'll quote directly from MAFC's source. "Maintaining a safe environment is critical to the district's ability to returning students to a full-time classroom learning experience." According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of the coronavirus and to keep members of our school community safe is the use of face masks or face covering. Therefore, using the guidance and recommendations from the CDC, the DESI, and the Mass Department of Public Health, the district has established the following requirements, which will remain in place until further notice. And I also attached my.
Your two minutes is up. Thank you. The next person is Dan Fenner.
Good evening. As an expert in the field of air filtration, I wanted to give some input on the forced masking discussion. No matter your stance on whether you want kids to wear face masks or not, you should properly educate yourselves on mask effectiveness first. Let me start by saying that masks do work to some degree. There's no doubt about it. However, the masks that work aren't the masks kids or adults are even wearing. The only affordable, readily available mask that's capable of even partially filtering COVID-19 particulate is the N95-style mask, such as this one. Two minutes isn't enough time to go into full detail as to why. So to crudely summarize, COVID-19 particulate is extremely small, and no filter media is actually capable of capturing all of COVID particulate. I install HEPA filters twice the thickness of this filter in Class 1 clean rooms, twice the thickness to filter the air, even those very well-designed filters with a perfect seal can capture all COVID-19 particulate. So if those massive thick filters aren't 100% guarantee, I'm sure you can imagine how ineffective or completely useless the masks that most people use are. This is because of the distance and the thread material and the massive gaps around the edges. So in summary, if this committee votes to mask our children, it better also make plans to supply new N95-style masks every day for every child and every teacher of this school year. If any other mask is permitted, then the vote to cover children's faces is, in my opinion, bordering on child abuse, as the average mask worn is nothing more than a Petri dish for bacteria at that point. People need to seriously educate themselves on the effectiveness of masks and what type of masks. If you read into all of the literature that the experts are putting out, they're specifying styles masks. No one's wearing those. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person, and I apologize if I pronounce your name incorrectly, Ladya Romero.
Hi, yes, it's a Ladya Romero. I reside at 9 Balsam Drive, and I have a student at Johnny Appleseed. I just want to speak briefly about my experience with my son this summer at summer school. My son was remote all of last year. He went in person for summer school. I would send my son to school with a mask, and my son would return home without a mask. And when I asked him why, he told me that it was not required at school. And so as a parent, I'm very concerned. In fact, his pediatrician also was appalled to learn that during summer school, they were not required to wear masks. So I just want to speak to that point and see if there is a way for the school committee or, you know, our schools to be able to have a policy where if, as a parent, I am requesting that my child wear a mask, that it be enforced or be respected, and that they assist children. My son is only seven, and so clearly he would need some help with ensuring that his mask stays on. Additionally, I just want to point out that we all know that the Delta variant is just much more contagious, and the numbers are rising, including in Lemonster. The largest population that are unvaccinated in Lemonster are Latinos, people of color. And so we are working diligently to try to help get these folks vaccinated. But in the meantime, I'm just asking the school committee to consider keeping our children safe, keeping our Latino families safe as well, by allowing masks to be worn at school, and consider mandating a policy that masks be worn throughout the district.
Thank you. The next person is Mike Dillon.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mike Dillon. Resident of Lowell, Massachusetts, and I'm actually a school committee member in Lowell. I was asked to make a statement here tonight by someone from your community. I guess my message tonight goes to the decision-makers, those on the school committee or anybody else in the school department that has a decision. Make it absent of all the noise. Think about it from an educational perspective. And I don't think there's any way, when looking at it that way, that you can agree that masking, making a blanket mandate is something that is good for the population. Just last week in Lowell, we had 5,000 kids in summer school with masks optional, and we're doing the same thing in Lowell. Now, a week and a half later, we're saying masks have to be mandated. And I think that is dangerous and contradictory. Please use an educational perspective when you're thinking about it. Also, we need to squash this notion that everybody else is responsible for my health. That is an unhealthy way for our kids to be thinking, never mind, you know, all of us adults. And putting that in our kids' heads, I mean, any psychologist or any social worker in your district will tell you that that is an unhealthy way to think. And your health is your responsibility. And I would respect anybody's decision to wear any type of mask or any type of protective equipment, but forcing it on others is, it's just not right, and it's not a healthy way to think. I'd also like you to think about what repercussions are going to be, because that's when it gets really pretty serious, is what are repercussions going to be if someone says, "Daff," or a student just says, "No, I don't want to wear a mask."
Thank you. The next person.
Thank you very much.
Is Nikki Turpin.
Yep, it's Turpin, and I'm at 40 Jocelyn Street. It's okay. So I would like to say first, K through 6 was never allowed to unmask. And so the idea of having unvaccinated children not be able to wear a mask when they are completely the future of all of us, and to put them at jeopardy, to me, just seems ridiculous. And I understand that 7th graders and up can be vaccinated and or masked, and so that is on the parent's choice. But as of right now, it is still not ideal or recommended that K through 6th graders are unmasked. I also want to bring up the second pandemic that has been happening, which is our educational system in general and the curriculums that we see. And I'm really hoping that committee takes time, some time throughout this year, to look at how we are teaching history, English, all subjects, when we look through the perspective of people of color who are not represented or who are underrepresented. I was horrified last year, probably over more than I should have been, but actually, maybe not, that Dr. Seuss was still being taught in our Johnny Appleseed schools, when there are so many different authors, writers, poets, who could be used to discuss reading and engage children in that reading. I am absolutely amazed that Jason Reynolds is the middle school book, and I'm super happy to see that. But while we're sitting here talking about the future, to put them at risk and not even give them the opportunity to survive, it just seems crazy. And our outside communities are doing the same. Lexington is mandating masks. If you don't want your child to be masked, then you will be homeschooling your child. It is to keep everybody safe. I don't need two minutes to really say that, but that's what it is.
All right, thank you. The next folks who have signed up are Andrew and Allison.
Good evening. I just wanted to point out really quick, well, we live on Dogwood here, that we are in a significant risk county, which says an elevation from just from the past couple of weeks. Mask recommendations by the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as the Director of National Institutes of Health, have recommended that children under the age of 12 should be wearing masks. I also want to point out, and I'm just trying to keep this in context of where we live regionally in the United States. However, down south, I understand vaccination rates are lower. However, I am reading through several counties right now of how many counties in Georgia alone have had to close schools for two weeks because multiple students are testing positive for COVID-19, and they don't have mask mandates. Now, the point I'm trying to make with this is that why are we not thinking about the domino effect to where if a child needs to quarantine, what the parent then needs to miss work to care for their child? And then that parent needs to inform their employer that I need to quarantine because my child tested positive for COVID, and I need to possibly get tested. And then that employer then needs to inform the employees that we have a possible case. Pediatric cases have risen from, just a week from August 5 to August 12, nationwide, 121,427. And I do understand that a lot of this is in the South. From a personal note, I am a correctional officer, and I work in a facility to where we are having a really serious outbreak of the Delta variant. I go into work every day, and I am seeing how fast this spreads. I even buy at-home tests to make sure that I'm not coming home with this to spread it to my kid. And I know that my son, I would feel absolutely guilty if I came home with the virus, gave it to my son, and then he went into a school classroom and possibly infected other children, knowing that that could put a hardship on other parents. I'm not understanding how it is that difficult to have a minor inconvenience to give kids masks to protect them in their classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Jace. Go ahead.
Hi, Jace Connor, and my wife, Kristy, is here as well, Johnny Appleseed Lane. We have two young children about to come into Fallbrook. I'm going to say I'm kind of beside myself on what I'm hearing. Yeah, I mean, I'm not politicizing anything, fear-mongering. I take kind of a little bit of an insult to the air filtration guy, talking about people educating themselves. You have some pretty highly educated people on this forum, I can guarantee you. So let's not just conflate and talk about half-truths and partial truths. The reality is, at the end of the day, this is about our children. Nikki summed it up pretty well. I mean, why not err on the side of caution? That we have plenty of science, we have plenty of data, doesn't need to be politicized. If you can, they can't be vaccinated. Exactly. Our children are nine and six. They cannot be vaccinated. One is at risk. She takes a rescue inhaler three times a day. Why would I chance her going to an unmasked, unsafe environment with a respiratory disease that's killing adults? I mean, and I don't even want to get to the statistics or whatever, but I just don't understand why we would not be overly cautious. If the mandate is to protect the children, the well-being and the health and the safety of our children, we entrust you to take care of our children when they go on to school, just like you're under regulation to provide a safe work environment for your faculty and staff. If we need more time to figure out the science, if we need more time to figure out a protocol or a process or a procedure, why not give that time by saying, I mean, for the start of the school year, masks? Everybody, over 30 districts in Massachusetts are already mandating it, including Pittsburgh, right next to us. I'm sure there's school choice kids coming from Pittsburgh. We're going to put them back out to the community after potential exposure. I mean, it's a mild inconvenience. A mild inconvenience.
Thank you. The next person is Greg Goodwin.
Hi. First time participating in any of this kind of rhetoric. I did watch some of what happened last year, and I got to be honest.
Could you just state your address, please, for the record, and then go on? I'm sorry.
Gregory Goodwin, 15 Imperial Ave, Lemonster, Massachusetts. Look, I got to be honest, like, it sounds like everyone's got a little prepared speech. I came in here not as prepared, except for this. This is literally our children's education and our children's safety. I don't understand why it took an entire year to get to the point that we are, but it doesn't seem like we're any closer to figuring out how to conduct learning with COVID safely without causing huge controversy and bickering between each other. So I dive in just to see, like, what exactly are the adults getting into, and what exactly are they basing their decisions off of? One of the things I found was Commissioner O'Reilly sent all the superintendents a study. The study itself said, just basically depicts the death rate between children under the age of 17 who contracted COVID over in England and who died. And, you know, based on that study, they concluded it was a small amount. This is a new strain, and this is a new year. And the study was also based when everyone stayed at home in their own separate units. So now, it confuses me that we see this, and you guys are basing decisions off of information like this. But then at the same time, you're not factoring in, well, they're all going back to school. That means it's going to blow up again. It's going to be a hive. So I guess, I guess my ultimate question, my ultimate concern is that as we go back and forth, just hear everyone's concern.
Your two minutes is up.
This has been a hard year. Just hear everybody out.
Thank you. Katie Aubin is next.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for letting me speak. I'm speaking as a parent, and, you know, I'm not a medical professional. So, and I know, you know, members on the school board are not medical professionals and experts, but I do believe parents are experts on their children's health and safety. And I think parents should be the ones to make a decision on what they want, if they want masks or not masks for their children going into the school year, because I think parents are the number-one factor in their kids' health. I think the parents are the experts, and it's left up to them. So I believe in parents' choice for masks. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next person who signed up was Greg Thomas.
Hi, everybody. Greg Thomas, 310 Leggett Hill Road. I am a candidate for Ward 3 School Committee. I want to keep my message brief here. The discussion of masking comes down to really two arguments. One being that the school committee is not equipped to make public health policy decisions. Those decisions should fall under the DESI guidance. They've brought in health experts to make those decisions and those recommendations. We don't ask school committee members to make decisions on whether cafeteria workers should wear gloves when they serve food. Those decisions are made by the Department of Public Health, and neither should, and nor should this fall under nurses in the school at all. The DESI guidance and the DPH guidance that was sent out on July 30 expressed specifically, and I quote, "Massachusetts, among the highest vaccination rate of any state in the nation, evidence continues to reinforce COVID vaccines are highly effective, especially against severe disease. At the same time, even though those students are not yet vaccinated, the apparent risk of COVID-19 to children remains small. These factors continue to reinforce that many previously instituted COVID-19 mitigations measures in school settings are no longer necessary." In addition to this, there were several studies referenced, as Greg had mentioned in one of his statements. There's a study from England that represents that two in every million child is likely to die from COVID. That is .000008%. In addition to that, the vast majority of children are asymptomatic. And the studies that I referenced, and I had sent to the school committee in the last two days, show that asymptomatic individuals spread COVID at a rate 600%, 650% less than pre-symptomatic or symptomatic people. In addition to that, children transmit COVID at a rate 82% less than adults to adult transmission. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? There was no other names in the chat that I saw. If you would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brad Alpert. I'm a pediatrician, and I practiced pediatric critical care for 20 years of my 40-year career. So the first thing I'd like to say, pardon me.
Could you just state your address, please?
76 Walnut Street, Lemonster.
Thank you.
So the psychological reasons for being admitted to an ICU in 20 years, never saw those things, don't believe it exists, they were mentioned earlier on. We admit some kids for psychological reasons when they've tried to commit suicide. All this other stuff, spunk. So I have some I'd written out here. So Worcester County is in the CDC zone of substantial transmission of COVID. As such, everyone in Lemonster, vaccinated or not, should be masked indoors. People aren't doing that. But that also includes schools. The CDC, the preeminent public health organization in the world, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, the preeminent professional organization for pediatricians, have recommended masking in school regardless of vaccination status. The Delta variant is much more dangerous for children than previous variants. Kids can get seriously ill and even die. Texas Children's Hospital, which is by far the largest children's hospital in the country, it dwarfs Boston Children's Hospital, was full due to COVID patients last week and was having to transfer patients out of the hospital hundreds of miles away because they were out of beds. We can get there too, if we fail to act. The CDC, our present CDC director recently said, "I think we fall into a flawed thinking of saying that only 400 of the 600,000 deaths from COVID-19 have been children." Children are not supposed to die, so 400 is a huge amount. If this disease were affecting children in the same amounts that it is, and we're not affecting adults, every pediatrician in this country, hair would be on fire that 400 kids have died of some new disease over a year. It's insane.
Your two minutes is up. Thank you. Would any- Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Yes, this is Caitlin Volpe, 20 Shady Lane. I'm listening to this conversation between everybody and I am so worked up over this, I'm literally shaking. I can't believe that nobody can listen to each other and understand the science behind mask wearing. There is no science behind masks, okay? Masks do not prevent the spread of COVID. The particles are way too small, they go right through the mask. It's like wearing a piece of fabric on your face for absolutely no reason. You're literally just covering up these kids' faces so they can't talk to you, okay? It's, they are ineffective, they hold on to bacteria, they cover the faces of the kids, which gets them sick with bacteria now at this point. Because of the least affected, they stop, we need to stop punishing them for no reason. They are not responsible for the health of other people, especially adults. It's abuse to cover their faces when they don't work. Learning will be negatively affected, it should be a family choice. COVID is not going anywhere anytime soon. We have the common cold and the flu, which kills people every year too. You're gonna, you're gonna cover their faces for the rest of their lives? Because that's where we're headed right now, we're headed towards a place that is completely controlled by fear. We need to cut it out. It's the end of the story here, we need to let this be a family choice, that's it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee, please? One last and final time, if you wish to address the committee, please unmute yourself and state your name for the record and address. Having no one come forward, we're gonna close.
Rob Volpe, 20 Shady Lane, quick and simple. I did submit my testimony to you guys, the email, I'd just like to have added to the minutes for all to see. And I'm just gonna leave at that.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee before I close this portion of the meeting? Having no one come forward, we're gonna close the open forum at this time.
I will speak. Hello?
Okay.
My name is.
All right.
Okay.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
I will. My name is Amy Minor, I live at 12 Washington Place. I would like you all to consider, to consider a mask mandate with medical exemptions for those that truly cannot wear one. Please consider that the schools that have successfully remained open have mask mandates. Other schools were able to open all of last year with only a few shutdowns. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, I'm very upset after what I've heard tonight. If you will all take a minute to look at districts that did not mask, you will find they too closed shortly after. Think of Florida, Texas, Louisiana, Georgia, and more. Creating even more of a mess for families with a return to the remote platform, which is the exact opposite of what this community's goal towards successful in-person learning is. In one district, they only made it two days before being forced to switch back. We are the grownups, when you strip all else away, it is our sole job to keep the young alive. We have them wear helmets and seatbelts, why not mask during this time? We know it is a working tool towards safety, one that allotted to keep the adults safe and working. Can we please now give that same chance of safety to the children that we were given as adults? Children becoming long haulers or dying is preventable. Please vote for a safe return, not a more risky one. It is already risky enough with lunches, the honor system, and just the facts that they are kids. We do not need to purposely add to their risk factors. After everything the teachers have been through, they deserve every tool of safety available to them as well. We do not want to send the message to teachers and students that they do not matter as much as the rest of society when it has been made clear we can't function without them. Also, please keep in mind that siblings are coming home from different schools to family members that may be high risk, which will affect everyone. If schools are trimming open, then it needs to be a full community effort from educators, parents, and city compliance with CDC guidelines. We do not want Leamester's legend to be known for our rap rate.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to address the committee? Okay, we're gonna close this portion of our meeting at this time. Thank you to everyone who spoke, I know it's a very emotional issue on, you know, both sides. So we certainly can appreciate that.
You're the right thing.
At this time, we're going to, so at this point, it's important for everyone to be muted. We're going to move on to the presentation and we have superintendent's goals, I mean, I'm sorry, communication. Sorry about that. There are no communications this evening? All right, we'll move right into your report then. Okay, so I know there's a couple of thousand parents in our community that might be a little more excited than I am, but our doors are opening, we are ready. Last Thursday, we just finished our summer program with enrichment programs and this Thursday, we are introducing many, many new teachers to our district and then we're back, our doors are open. We are going to typical, typical, I will never say the word normal again, typical school hours that we had pre-COVID. So with school opening, the first day for teachers will be August 30th. For grades one through twelve, it will be August 31st. And for pre-K and our littlest customers K, it will be September 7th. The buildings look amazing, our custodial staff and our teachers are doing everything they can. The mitigation and ventilation has been fine tuned and cleaned. We have additional PP in place, we did not remove any of the structures or protocols from last year. If there's anything anybody needs, those are in place, but the schools are opening. And they're opening to the point that meet and greets are starting this week. It's imperative that parents' contact information is as up to date as possible. For example, tomorrow night at the high school from six to seven is the meet and greet for our freshman class. And the following day is for our sophomores, who truly didn't get a meet and greet. Last year, we had sort of an adapted program. So those are really important for our high school students. Our kindergarten are having socials and ice cream popsicles. There's something going on at every single building. So I want to make sure, I can't say it enough, if your contact information isn't up to date, you might miss out on things. Bus routes, that's very important. Those will be out next week. I will send a notification out district-wide to let parents know where they are posted and if they have to contact somebody regarding any of the stops, just let us know. There'll be a phone number and a direct contact so that we can address those as best possible. With that being said, I want to just announce that all of our schools have a new phone system. So please, if you're quick to hit extensions because you've been in a school for a few years and you know that extension, just know that extension lines have changed slightly. So you might need to listen to the menu before you hit a key if you're looking for a teacher or guidance or administration. So the whole district now has updated all of their phones, so make sure you're paying attention to that. Great news again for FY22, breakfast and lunch are free for all of our students. Once again, we have done a great job, we've used our food service along with the USDA and our children. Food insecurity will not be an issue for us here in Leamester. Should you need any further information, please contact our Parent Information Center or my office. But moving forward for FY22, all lunches and breakfast will be free for every student in Leamester. Before and after school. So we still have our Creative Choice program. These programs fill up really fast and we are looking for some more employees. We hire a lot of college students to help us during the summer and then they go back to school. So we have very limited seats before and after. But if you're looking for availability, please contact Mindy Marcello. She is located at Central Office and her extension is 1313. So give us a call anytime and she will help you out. Also, just know that we have bilingual support this year in all of our buildings. There, at some point, there is a Spanish or Portuguese person who could help families. So if you are in need of that, just call the school and ask for that assistance. You should be able to have that service rendered to you. And as of this morning, we had a line out the door, still enrollment is coming in every single day. Today was the first day that all the building secretaries were back to work full-time. So they are very quickly trying to put all of those new registrations into the system. Once a family's name is in the system, they automatically go on to the contact list and they receive all the emails going out, whether they're from me, from the building, or from the teacher. So let's make sure we can get those updated as fast as possible. And I, lastly, I just want to thank the community. I've been watching social media a little bit and we've had some new families move in and they've reached out on social media to say, hey, can you help me with this? Or where do I find a school schedule or what, you know, who should I call about enrolling? And members of this community have been very, very supportive to one another. So I just want to give a shout out to everybody, even if you don't have children in Leamester and you understand the process, you know, just help a neighbor and it's all a betterment for everyone. So again, I thank you, I want Leamester to keep it going and just get ready, we're open in two weeks tomorrow. Thank you. Superintendent, I have a quick question, going back to the free breakfast and lunch. I know during this past year, we also provided weekend meals for families. Is that something that is discontinued or what's the status of that? Let me double check with Chartwells, I just don't want to misspeak. And I will get back to the community. Right, that would be, I think, just important for folks to know if that's something that's still available to them. Great question. How to access that. All right, well, thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to our presentation and discussions and the superintendent's goals is up first. Thank you so much. As you know, attached in your packet, these are the FY22 goals. When I set my goal, we want those goals to filter down all the way to the students and to the children's classroom teacher. And so with that, we can create a synergy and put all of our efforts in a very focused area. This will foster any type of accountability system moving forward from all indications, and trust me, one hundred and eighty full days of school, in-school, in-person. Our state testing will be put back into place, all of the structures that we had before, assessments throughout the year. We will be able to monitor, what I have in here is performance goals, I have district goals, and I also have a specific student learning goal. I actually have two of them that are very measurable and tight. So this evening, I would like to give these goals over to you. Just have you review them, provide me with any feedback. I have taken into consideration the circumstances that we may or may not be in. I think we are going to be navigating and living amongst COVID for a while. And so I know that we can be successful in these areas and we are working with administration all this week to put their goals in place, which will be communicated out to their staff as soon as we begin. So we will look to have not only academic achievement, but social emotional achievement, behavioral achievement, and overall well-being achievement. So I am hoping, if you have any feedback, that you are free to let me have it. So I appreciate your time. Thank you, Superintendent. Does anybody have any questions right now? I know we have it in our packet to review, it's not anything that we need to vote on, but just want to see if anybody has any questions. And so what I will do is just briefly call in everyone since we are back in the Zoom format. Sue?
I would like to dedicate a night of talking about the goals. I think goals are really important for the district and I did go through them. Some of them I thought were vague, so I think it's important for all of us to really understand them. For example, we just invested all this money in a new, we got rid of Reading Wonders, which we spent like a half a million dollars on a couple of years ago, we replaced that. So what are some measurable goals with all this new curriculum that we, you know, I think we need to really look at that and talk about it and whatever. So I'd like to see us have a meeting, you know, just to talk about goals or at least a portion of the meeting. That would be my recommendation.
Sure. Okay. Melissa, do you have anything you want to say regarding the goals?
I'm all set.
Ron?
I'm all set right now, thank you.
Ron, what about you? You're muted.
Unmute myself, yeah, okay. I was just wondering where it, on the professional practice goal tool, like for analyzing diagnostic data. Are you gonna, will you, will you release that to us, you know, like, on a quarterly, you know, once a month, maybe, what your diagnostic data is showing?
Sure.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I wouldn't, quarterly, let me check on the timeline on that, Ronnie, just because we have quite a few different pieces of data that we use and they happen at different times. So it might have to be mid-year when we do my mid-year review and then again at the end of the year. It depends on when the assessment team, the calendar lands, but yeah, that's no problem, those are always available.
It's just, it's just, it's just to have a rudimentary graph or, you know, a snapshot of what's going on as compared, what happened in the past versus the projections for the future, that's all.
For sure. We share those with families, as we collect it, we share it out with them. So it's not any, it's not a problem to share it out with the school committee as well.
Okay, that's good, I'm happy, thanks, thank you Paula, Superintendent.
Michael, do you have any questions or thoughts to share?
I think Sue and Ron made excellent points, I have no further questions at this time.
All right, Peter?
I have nothing further right now.
Isabel?
I have nothing at this time, no.
Brandon?
All set.
And Dean?
Yes, I think my biggest concern is at the last quarter of the last school year, we talked extensively about assessing every single student's own, we knew exactly where they stood. I think at all costs, we need to do that assessment as soon as possible, so we know where every single student is. So we can meet with their parents, we can meet, so we put a student, what I call a family educational plan together so that we can A, catch those students up and B, get on with the next school year. So when will that be done, when will the assessments be done? When will they be released? What is the date that we'll begin to meet with teachers and students? And when will the, you know, sort of plan be signed off by parents, teachers, guidance counselors and students? That is, to me, I can't let another year slip away at all costs.
Correct.
This, we talked about this and we all agreed this would be done and so my question is, when?
Okay, so typically, we always start the very first week we get in there. Our elementary, we will start testing the second that we have them in there, that's easy enough to do. We're bringing in a new program between grades six through nine with some professional development around that to better assess and be able to communicate what that data means. So by mid-September, all students will have their first round of assessments and the work really begins then. The communication out to the parents needs to be shared because this year, more so than any other year, attendance is going to be huge. We need students there as many full days as possible. We have a boatload to do, we have a boatload. And, you know, we have all sorts of pivot points during the year that we progress monitor. Every six weeks with our reading series, we have teachers doing their own assessments weekly, but the big turnaround points happen quite often. So we will be communicating that to not only the school committee, but we need our parents to understand where we're at and why we're doing the things that we're doing as soon as possible.
So why don't we, why don't we put, add on our second meeting in September, add this on as a agenda item to see where we're at, so we can do a little temperature check to see exactly where we're at with it. And see how we do, I think that's the most important thing as a school committee that we can do this year, outside of the fact that we've got to, you know, deal obviously with the issue of sending kids back and are they masked, not masked, partially masked, but I think this is the most important thing. I've listened to parents all summer and they've shared their concerns and I don't want to go into another quarter or another half of the year with kids falling behind. And so I think it's that important, we put it on as our agenda item for the second, our second meeting in September.
So I think that's actually good timing because we do have spring data, spring data, FY21 spring data for K through eight. We were monitoring students all year and assessments were going through. So although we were in a pandemic, there's some pretty relevant information in there that we are utilizing to move forward, but we are reassessing after what we've done through the summer months and moving forward and having a more typical type of school year. So I think the timing of the second week would work well, second meeting.
So actually, we could compare spring, you said you have spring data, so we can compare spring data to those that went to summer school and kind of see if, you know, maybe the summer school programs helped out and at what capacity we could sort of measure that, so that would be helpful as well.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, thank you. So at this time, we're going to move on to.
So at this time, we're going to move on to our masking situation. And I would like to hear from Kathy Goddett, Paula, as part of the information. And then I, if, I don't know, Paula, if you have anything that you want to add specifically. But then I'll allow, you know, everybody an opportunity on the committee. I'll call on you so you can express your viewpoints.
Kathy has made herself available this evening.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me speak. So I've also been listening to everybody. It's a combination of mitigation techniques. Last year worked so well because we had people staying home while sick. We had them hand washing on entry to the school and on entry to the classrooms. We had, towards the latter part, we had the vaccines. We had the masking in place for students and staff. And we did contact tracing. Those that were sick, we got them out. We found the close contacts since we had that positive diagnosis and we quarantined. Then the end of May and beginning of June happened. And it's almost as if people forgot that we had a pandemic. We need, we are, the policies from the state, from DESI, really recommends not giving up on these mitigation techniques to continue with them. So right now, we're working on binax at home testing for those that are close contacts and cannot be in school. Those that are vaccinated tend to stay in school as long as they are symptom-free and a close contact. But my job, my concern is getting the kids in the building where they can learn at their best. And the best way to do that is to keep those masks. Don't, we need to have and continue that combination mitigation techniques. The combination of staying home when sick and washing, mask use, distancing to the best that we can, depending on, you know, it's kind of difficult, I think, you know, in a high school when they're changing classrooms. But masks, it's one of the easiest things. And in case people forgot, it's mandatory for all kids who take public transportation, those buses, they have to wear a mask. Anyone going into the nurse's office has to wear a mask. Why not just keep the masks on and help the kids in regards to keeping their masks on? I think that's the easiest, simplest thing we can do in regards to keeping our kids in school.
All right, thank you, Kathy. I'm going to call on each of the school committee members. And you can either obviously ask Kathy any questions or just, you know, sort of express where you are at in this process. I'm going to start with Mike.
Mike, you're muted.
I was worried my keyboard shortcut didn't work. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, Kathy, I'm under the impression that this summer, we had some programs that mandated masks. Like I believe Creative Choices did that and some others like Summer School that did not was because the DESI had made it sort of optional. Did we see a difference in cases and need to quarantine between the programs that required masks and the programs that did not?
Yes, we did. Thank you. Yeah, so Creative Choices mandated that if you want to be part of that program, staff and students had to wear masks. And I'm going to tell you, I didn't have to quarantine anybody in that program. But we did have cases in our other schools where we had to isolate and quarantine in some of the large numbers of people as a result. So, so yes.
Thank you. So if we're expressing opinions, I'll just say, I think Dr. Albert said it very well. We have a number of studies and we have a number of issues to weigh. And the experts at the American Academy of Pediatrics has done so and told us that we should have full in-person schooling with a mask mandate for everyone. That's the best way to get as much in-person education as we can while being as safe as we can. And as others have said, as we just heard from Kathy, the best chance to have that continue working and not switch back to some other program, either quarantines or having to go hybrid again, is to keep the cases down through masking. The CDC has agreed with the American Academy of Pediatrics and given us the same recommendation. Again, the actual experts have looked at this and told us to do this. It's only our governor, our state, that hasn't quite gotten on board. And yet, we also learned this summer that in their, the governor's previous announcement, taking them mandates away this spring was over the objections of his own state board of health. So I'm going to trust the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC. And I'm in favor of following their guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Melissa?
Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. So I have also felt torn and I've gone back and forth over the last few days about this. I know people are concerned about the politicalization of the CDC and wanting parents to have choices. What really has me frustrated is that none of us are public health officials. And yet, we're being put into a position, I feel, to have to make a public health decision. What I would really want is our local public health, which I understand is in a period of transition. What I would really want is them to make a stance on this for us. But in the meantime, without that, if DESI is strongly encouraging, DPH is strongly encouraging, Governor Baker, as of today, is strongly encouraging us to wear masks. And then I hear probably the one person that I trust the most in Leominster, Kathy Goddett, to make decisions. And was there when my babies were sick with it and when I was sick with it and when my husband was sick with it. That solved it for me. So I'm 100% going to support this. I would be fine with reevaluating timelines. I would be fine with getting DP Board of Health guidance and timelines. But for right now, without those pieces, then I'm in support of masking.
Okay, Ron?
I I am a nurse. I am an RN. And I do work in public health. I, I'm strongly supportive of the mask, masking. The virus is mutating and it's not mutating to get weaker, it's mutating to get stronger. I honestly believe that we opened up too soon and we're going to suffer the consequences, witness what's happening down south. I am very much afraid we might have to go back three steps in the future. Every day, you see on TV, you see in the paper, there are more people getting sick. And, you know, you go to Hannaford's or Walmart or Demola's, you see some people wearing masks, some people not wearing masks. I think we need to keep wearing masks. Children, adults. It's just, I, no matter how you slice it. And yes, there are people out there who don't want to wear masks. The anti-vaxxers, I can't help them. I can only tell them what needs to be told. And as a nurse, sometimes I have to tell people stuff they don't want to hear. I fully support the idea of masking. And I also believe that we're going to probably have to follow some guidelines. Yes, Uncle Charlie and Aunt Karen at the State House, they haven't come out and saying it's a public health emergency. But they're going to have to sooner versus later. We see on the TV every day, the positivity rate is going up. You can't make this pretty. People are going to get sick. They're going to, people are going to die. And that's the sad part, young and old. Those that are immunocompromised, those that are not immunocompromised. Make sure everyone looks at themselves, looks in the mirror and ask, who's going to be next when you open up the obit, when you open the paper and look at the obituaries? Because it's not going to be pretty. Masks, yes, there are some difficulties with masks, but it's our best shot along with staying six feet apart. And I can't overemphasize the necessity of wearing masks, as discomfortable as it is. Anyway, that's my, that's my statement.
Thank you, Ron. Brandon?
Thanks, Eileen. I want to start by thanking all of the parents that have reached out to us over the recent days. As a public servant and as someone who recently finished a public administration program, I look at this with a community view. And I think that's how we need to look at this because in a public health crisis, we're all affected. Unfortunately, the state has taken a backseat to making a decision. They've issued strong recommendations, but has left the decision to local communities like our own. We've gotten strong recommendations from DESI. We've got Governor Baker, like Melissa said today, came out and said that he can strongly recommend having kids continue to wear masks. The CDC has said the same. So I think in light of the fact that we are watching cases rise, not only across the country, but here in Leominster, we got information today that we're up to 92 active cases. We need to take action to keep our kids safe. And I think the best way to do that is with masks in school with, you know, the idea of reevaluating the situation as things go on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Peter?
Yep, thank you. You know, as has been said, you know, we've, we've advice from DESI, DPH, the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC, which all strongly recommend the continued use of masks indoors in schools, regardless of vaccination status. It's unfortunate, as it's also been said, that the state and, you know, the federal government haven't taken any action on this and basically like last year, kind of left it to us as a backstop to make these decisions. I'm all for masks indoors. I mean, I all of the, you know, authorities seem to agree on that, you know, health-wise. I would say that, you know, in terms of mandating it, it makes sense for a few different reasons. You know, one of them being that a lot of the mask is protecting those around you as well as yourself. So taking the community approach to all this. Another is that even in, as it's been stated by one of the parents who spoke tonight, we do have kids from the same family in different schools, at different grade levels. And so even if some of them are masking and others aren't, you know, we're really doing the best to protect, you know, that household as a whole. And also, you know, just for the older kids, you know, tracking and hunting down who's vaccinated, who's not. It just makes sense to have it across the board. And also for unforeseen, you know, social dynamics of which kids are wearing masks, which ones aren't and how, you know, that will kind of play into, you know, just the social settings of our students. So that's where I'm at. I appreciate all the comments we've received and all the opinions. But, I mean, like I said, DPH, DESI, American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC all seem to agree on this. And it's just unfortunate that, you know, we're the ones who have to put it into place.
All right, thank you. Sue?
I also want to thank everyone that spoke tonight. I agree with my colleagues on the school committee. We have the information before us from all the professionals, including our nurse leader. And I, you know, it's an inconvenience, absolutely, but I don't know. I look at my grandchildren and the masks are not a big deal for them. They went to summer camp. They went to the Y summer camp. They, I mean, it's just part of life right now. And I think kids are so resilient. I think sometimes the parents are the ones that, you know, are in the state of shock. But seriously, you know, it's definitely an inconvenience. It's, I think it's more of an inconvenience for us as adults. It is for me anyway. But I just think, you know what, it's not worth risking health, you know? Hopefully, the virus will go away at some point. But the other side of it is, you know, how many people have had colds and stuff? I think the masks have helped them, you know, with, you know, normal flu things. So I definitely support the masking, at least right now. And we can have some kind of a, you know, review of it, whatever, but I think we need it now.
Thank you. Isabel?
I think everything that I wanted to say has pretty much been said by everyone else. But I'll just say, I trust the CDC. I trust the American Academy of Pediatrics. I trust Kathy Goddett. And it's unfortunate that I can't trust Governor Charlie Baker to do the right thing and mandate masks for our students who are not vaccinated. And if he's not going to be a leader, then I will. And I am in full support of mandating masks because we need to make sure our kids remain in school and they're safe doing it and our teachers are safe. And that's, that's all I care about. I can sleep at night knowing that they're safe. So that's, that's where I stand.
Thank you. Dean?
There you go. Thank you. And for everybody that called in tonight and might be watching, thank you. So on my agenda, it says masking update. So last year, according to my minutes here, we gave the authority to the school superintendent. So are we taking that authority away from the school superintendent tonight and now voting on a new mask policy? Is that what we're doing? Now, I want to show I understand this.
Right. So it's my understanding that we had given the superintendent authority last year to make some decisions around moving to and from, you know, sort of the hybrid to back in person, given, you know, sort of what was going on within the state. I don't know that we specifically said masking. I don't recall that because I think that was a state mandate as opposed to a local, you know, mandate. But I do think that we need to have, I guess I'll talk when I need to talk, but, you know, I think we do need to provide the community with a sense of what is going to happen and school's starting very shortly. So I don't know. Dean, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I think we missed something that Kathy Goddett said. And she said, to make sure the students are safe so that they can learn. That's the most important thing. And there are children, and not one person mentioned tonight, that there are students who can't learn with a mask. It causes stress and everybody has their own personal experience about how it relates to them or their grandkids or their children. But I have to tell you, I think I would be one of those students that have a difficult time sitting there all day with a mask on. And so maybe we need to look at, maybe we need to identify who those students might be and see if we can accommodate them with a different mask. It's pretty interesting that us as adults have 850,000 different designs and different masks, but yet we give those students, pretty much the same students that I've seen, pretty much wearing the same mask. Secondly, we're still in good weather. Last year's school systems were very successful without COVID cases because they, a lot of their lessons were taught outside the schools. And we know that, that, you know, the various variants do not like the heat, don't like the sun. So I hope, I see some tents out there and we have little amphitheaters that have been built outside the schools. I hope we're making good use of that. And the other thing I wonder is other environments where students are far enough away from other students where maybe they don't And the other thing I wonder is other environments where students are far enough away from other students where maybe they don't have to. So I E. I walked into the, one of the gymnasiums at the, at the high school. Clearly, everyone is far enough away from each other where I, I can understand, like at restaurants, there were six people, six feet apart, whatever it might be, six people to a table. Yet, when you get what, you didn't have to, obviously you didn't have to wear a mask when you're sitting, but when you get up and moved around the facility or go to the restroom or coming or going in the restaurant, you had to wear your masks. So I don't know if any of those provisions um were taken into consideration. Uh, but I think those should be, but I do think we should be mindful of those students who do have a difficult time learning. Other thing I wanna say is let's back up for a moment. We were told we shut down for two weeks and this thing goes away. And then we were told later on, well, that's not quite the case. So remember the first of those who received the vaccines, whether it be the Johnson and Johnson or the other two that required a second shot. I think the frustration, a lot of the frustration I hear is that people were under the impression that you get your shots and you're all set. And now they're being told, no, that's not the case. That's not, there's a new variant, that's not the case. And um, I question just how successful or effective some of these masks are by the end of the day. And I, maybe, maybe somebody in the health kit profession wants to do a swab of these things and see what's on by the end of the day. Cause um, from some of the parents that report back to me, uh, who tell me what their children's masks look like by time they get home, my question whether or not they're protecting anybody. So I would say at this particular point, I mean, we're really not experts in this field, I think. I heard it from a couple of school committee members. This is not our field of expertise. We are not the health board. Uh, there are some health boards across the state that have recommended uh a volunteer, if you wanna wear a mask to school, you can. And if you don't wanna wear it, or if you've been vaccinated, you don't have to wear it. But let's not minimize the frustration that parents have because all along, they're following along this discussion. And they're told you get your vaccine and you're all set. Uh, where did most of the uh, where did most of the clusters come from? Nobody mentioned that today. Uh, the most of the clusters came from people's homes, not from schools, from people's homes. Cause people weren't protecting themselves while they were home. So let's not erase everything that we've already learned. And, and, and not understand uh everybody's frustration on both sides with this. Every parent I heard tonight speak is speaking um because they care about their kids and other kids. That's important. That's an important thing to hear. Uh, Mr. Fenner um did speak tonight. He got us two minutes, but I have spoken with him extensively. He is a, I would call an expert in his field of um ventilation and air control systems. He's a very intelligent man and I heard a, a, at least one parent tonight minimize his expertise. And I would not minimize that. I've spoken with him many, many times. I think at this particular point. Um, you know, Desi is, is, we looked at uh Desi, if somebody wants to read Desi. I'll see if I can find it. So parents and everybody's on the same page. Desi says under masking, this fall, Desi and the DPH strongly recommend that all students in kindergarten through grade sis, six. Wear masks when indoors, except students who cannot do so to medical conditions or behavioral needs. Masks are not necessarily, not necessary outdoors and may be removed while eating indoors. Desi and DPH also strongly recommend that unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students in grade seven and above. And unvaccinated visitors wear masks indoors in alignment with the statewide advisor on masking. So while we're talking about the fact that uh Desi has made recommendations, is that what you're recommending tonight? I wanna make sure we're all voting. If we're taking a vote tonight, I wanna make sure we're all voting on the same thing. Because that is Destiny's recommendations. Grade six, uh kindergarten through grade six, except students, except students that cannot uh do so. Uh, due to medical conditions or behavioral needs.
All right. Thank you, Dean. Um, and I am gonna apologize in advance. Someone's uh pulled into my driveway to come in the house and my dogs are barking, so I apologize. Um, so, you know, I um feel um. That it's, we as a school committee have been put in a very unfair position. Um, because uh I think that to leave it up to individual towns does not make, you know, much sense. Um. You know, I was hoping that Desi would have come up or the governor would have come up with, you know, some very um clear recommendations and mandates for the entire state. Um, and unfortunately that did not happen. Um, I would also be interested to know what our own um director of, of Board of Health. Uh, you know, where, what his position would be. Um, obviously he has not started yet and we are in transition. Um, so I would want um, you know, to kind of continually assess the situation. Um, I would recommend that this sort of be an ongoing uh topic uh to review on our, uh maybe the first meeting of every single month. Um, just to take uh reassess and see where we're at. Um, but I do think that um. It's important for us to make decisions based on the welfare of um most children. Um, and there are avenues that if children are unable to be masked, there are exemptions, you know, for that. And Dean has spoken um about a couple of them, but I do believe there's a couple of more exemptions as well. Um, and so families who are concerned about their children's ability to um be masked, to learn masked. Um, have health issues, you know, please um look at those uh guidance and the exemptions. Um, I also agree that um if there's any um outdoor educational opportunities. Um, if you're outside, that should be um sort of at uh an option and not a mandate. But I do feel that um when staff and students are indoors, they should be, you know, masked. Um, I think it's gonna be a nightmare for students, uh not students, but for teachers. Um, at the high school, middle school, high school level to try to figure out who's vaccinated, who's not. Man trying to get those students who are not um vaccinated to wear masks. Um, I just think that's, you know, above and beyond, you know, what their position is as teachers. Um, they need to be teaching, they shouldn't be policing mask wearing. Um, so I would like to um advocate for a, a policy that will go for all individuals at all grade levels, including um staff. Um, and personnel who are in the school buildings. Um, would be my um personal opinion. Um, but for us to review this. Um, my bottom line is, is that I want children in school in person. Um, and I wanted that all last year. Um, we were finally able to do it towards the end of the year, but ultimately students need to be there to be able to have optimal learning. Lots of children have backslided um over this past year because remote learning was not appropriate platform for them or the most optimal platform. Um, we had to do it because we had no choice and, you know, that's kind of where we're at. But we do have a choice and we do need to keep students in the classroom. And if it's to wear masks, I don't particularly like wearing masks myself, but I am doing it now. Uh, despite being vaccinated, when I go into Walmart and other kinds of, you know, grocery stores, et cetera. Um, because things are changing. Um, our children are very resilient and if it changes back the other direction, I'm gonna be the first person to say, let's get rid of masking. Um, but I want kids to go to school. Um, it's easier to loosen up than it is to tighten up. So if we all start off on an even keel, um, that's, you know, kind of my recommendation. Um, and I think we should continue to assess it and hopefully we'll be getting more guidance from the CDC for the American Pediatrics, from our own Board of Health. Um, as a city. Um, those will be all very important people. I wanna continue to hear from, obviously, um Kathy Goddett being, you know, among one of those top folks as well. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at. Um, so at this point, I think everybody's had an opportunity.
I, I, I have one more thing here.
Starting.
Excuse me. Yes, and, and again, we've gotta share, we've gotta be upfront with people and tell them the truth. We, we can't, with all of this stuff that's said tonight, so I go to page three and it says, Desi and the Department of Health, Public Health recommend. That schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked. So you see what I'm saying here? We, we've gotta be upfront with it. If we're gonna start following policies and recommendations, we've gotta share them with people. We can't just pick certain pieces out of this thing. So tonight, if we're gonna adopt the policy and it's gonna be the one set by Desi and DPH, there're gonna be some people uh unhappy. When they find out that Desi and DPH record or that our policy now says that schools can allot it, that schools, that they hide, that they recommend that schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked. So I wanna know before we vote, I wanna see it in writing exactly what our policy's gonna be. I don't wanna hear a motion in a second. I wanna read it. I wanna see it and I wanna see exactly what it is and I wanna spend some time on it. Because that wasn't mentioned tonight, but I flipped the page and all of a sudden, here it is. We've gotta be honest with people.
I do think, I do think that um when I read the, the policy, that it did contradict itself. Um, and I think that's part of the problem. Mike had his hand up and then Isabel.
I don't think there's any.
You muted yourself, Eileen.
Sorry, I just wanted to let folks know that we cannot take comments from the public. I saw uh somebody raise their hand. But the open portion of the meeting is closed and there's not a dialogue um with the public entity. So I apologize for that. Mike, then Isabel.
Dean, we're having this discussion because the Desi guidance falls short of what the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC have told us to do.
Where does it say that, Mike?
Where does it say that? It, it's the exact thing you just read. The American.
Where does it say we're having this discussion? All it says in my notes here is masking. That's it. Masking update.
Did you read the recommendation of the American Academy of Pediatrics? It's in the packet. It says, it says full masking for all K through twelve students and staff.
It did not say.
Did you read the recommendation of the CDC? It says full masking for all K through twelve students and staff.
I read them all, Mike.
Okay, so there you go. So that's the issue is that, no, no, I have the floor, Dean.
Dean, Dean, let Mike finish.
Right? You just, you've said your piece twice.
Go ahead.
And I'm responding. The reason we're having this discussion is because Desi's guidelines differ. From what CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics have recommended. And frankly, I think Desi's guidelines are weak. And what the CDC and the pediatricians have told us to do. They're the experts who weighed this. It makes sense. So we don't have, you, you talked about voting yet. We don't have a motion in front of us. I'm hoping we'll have a motion to, well, maybe I should just go ahead and make it. I make a motion that we adopt as our policy.
Point of order, this is discussion. This is discussion.
Then I, then fine.
Point of order. One person at a time.
Mike can make a motion because everybody had a turn and then we, once we have a second, we can go back and um do some discussion, like we always do. So Mike, go ahead. And then after Mike is done, Isabel still is up next. Go ahead, Mike.
So I'll make a motion that a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings and on school transportation. We already know that part's required. In other words, I'm making a motion that we follow the, the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC. Which is that masking will be required for all grade levels, not just K through six. With, as you pointed out, exceptions for students who have issues with masks for medical or behavioral reasons. Which will need to be documented, but I trust that our administration will take those into account and act accordingly. The goal is to have all students in school full time, as everybody wants. And to keep it that way by keeping everybody from getting sick. So the masks are their necessary component of that. The studies that said we can do this maybe without, those are all pre-Delta. Back in May, Delta, the Delta variant was six percent of cases in the US. A couple of weeks ago, it's up to ninety-three percent of all cases in the US. Right? So we have to pay attention to what the actual health experts are saying now. Which is, it's important to have kids in school, so we wanna preserve that. The way you preserve that and keep people safe is you have masking to the fullest extent possible. It's not fun. I have to teach my class in mass. I wish I didn't, but.
Is this a motion? This is a motion?
So.
I did get out of my motion.
Yeah, so you have a, a motion, um, and then you started a discussion, but your motion, um, Chris, if you can repeat the motion without the discussion. And then I'll ask for a second.
Yes, um, hang on, let me see here. Um. Mike made a motion to adopt a face covering policy for all school buildings and transportation. Following the recommendation of the um American Pediatric Society and the CDC. And making masking required, a requirement for all grade levels with exceptions for students. Who have issues with the masks for medical or behavioral reasons.
I think, uh, Mike, just to clarify, you're not just talking about students, you're talking about all people who enter the school building.
Yes.
Which includes staff and employees or visiting.
I'm, right.
Okay, I like that.
Right. So I mean, the simplest way to say my motion is, is that I'm, I'm moving that we go and, and that we adopt a policy in line with the CDC policy. Which is agreed to by the American Academy of Pediatrics. We can spell out what that means. Means that all K through twelve students, faculty, staff, anyone in the, in the building is wearing masks. Yeah, um, obviously, you know, outside, not so, not required. Obviously have to take them off to eat, right? The policies they recommended, which are in our packet, I'm suggesting we do that rather than the much weaker Desi policy. Which doesn't take community responsibility into account.
Hey, you're going on to more discussion. So can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to discussion. Isabel is first.
I was just gonna say that the packet is posted publicly and so in the packet, it includes the Desi guidance. The CDC recommendations and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations, if anyone wants to review those.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to, um, Dean, I'm just gonna give other folks a chance, just because you've had two opportunities. Uh, let me see if anybody else, Sue, do you have anything else to add?
No, I agree. As long as, you know, the, the kids that can't wear the masks are considered, et cetera, I'm fine.
Brandon, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing else to add. I, I, I guess the only thing is that wasn't part of the motion was, uh, you know, reviewing this regularly. I think that's important. Uh, so if that needs to be a part of the motion, I would like to see that added.
I agree.
If that's necessary, I will happily, happily take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Um, Melissa, any thoughts?
Um, I guess my thought would be is to see if we could get some guidance or feedback from the local Board of Health. Maybe at the time we have our next vote, it sounds like the new director will be in place by then and maybe we can get some feedback from them and helping to reevaluate. Um, our decision then. Um, and yeah, I'm, I'm in support um with the timeline for review. The only other thing I would suggest is, you know, obviously what's already been built in and that's time for mask breaks. Especially as we know kids are gonna be returning to school in warm weather.
Okay, um, did I miss anybody before we go back to Dean? Ron?
I just would ask that the. Along with the masking rule, uh Paula and Kathy would, along with the, the new head of the Board of Health, would let us know what's the positivity rate. If the positivity rate increases, there will be other things that we're gonna have to, have to talk about. Also hoping that CDC and DPH will have to put more bite into their rules. And maybe Desi is gonna wake up and start smelling the coffee about what has to be done. I'm just asking that, you know, in two weeks, the, the next meeting is September, I had the date here. We might have a better, uh, September seventh is the, is the, our next meeting. Maybe by then we'll have a better idea. Where we're going with this. Eileen, Paula, Kathy?
Yep, thank you, Ron. I think that's a good suggestion. Dean? Did you have something else to add?
I think you heard Mike say two or three times, the reason we're having this discussion is because of the. I think you heard Mike say two or three times, the reason we're having this discussion is because of the conflict. I have no issue. I respect everybody's opinion. But those are the kinds of things that we need to share with parents. We need to say from the get go on our on a on a the the next sheet, on the public comment, whatever it's going to be, the agenda, that tonight we're going to have this discussion because there is a conflict between what the CDC and the the pediatricians are saying versus what our own state of Massachusetts Department of Public Health and DESI is saying. That's how we should be communicating. That is my issue. Everyone's entitled to their opinion. But for Mike to sit here tonight and say, what do you mean? That's why we're having this meeting tonight. Really? I don't see that anyway. It does not indicate in all of this information tonight that that's the purpose of the meeting tonight, that there's a difference between opinions. If it was the case, I would have called the Department of Public Health myself and invited them to this meeting tonight via Zoom. If I would have known that that's I didn't know that was the purpose of the meeting tonight. I don't think any parent or anybody watching tonight knew that that Mike has said very clear tonight that the reason for this meeting, he said it three times, the reason for this meeting tonight is because there's a that there's a difference in opinions or so, okay, well.
Point of order.
The people.
Point of order.
Yeah, Ron, it's okay. We're going to Dean's almost done.
So hold on. Let me invoke my privileges, the mayor. Where's the child?
So on our.
Hold on, excuse me.
About me while you're looking up things. It does talk about masking update and then we did get an update from Kathy Goddatt. And then it does say vote on masking if necessary. So we do have a motion in a second and we will be voting shortly.
I would like to invoke my privileges, the mayor of the city of Leominster, under sections two, that's six, communications, special meetings, and my right to address the city council or the school committee at any time.
You have to give us 48 hours notice to do that, Dean.
Doesn't say that at all. It says at any time. It says at any time.
Read the next couple of sentences. It spells out that you have to give us 48 hour 48 hours notice for that special meeting.
It says at any time.
And and right now we've given you obviously an opportunity to speak.
Okay, then let's just leave it at this.
Let me just let me just finish and so.
Sure. I just want to make sure.
Meeting inside a regular school committee meeting.
I just want to make sure that this it's in the minutes that Michael said three times that the purpose of this tonight is because there's a clear distinction between the two. I wish I would have known that was the 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 issue tonight. Okay? Because I would have better communicated with my constituents out there who I've had to speak with all week long. Because I didn't know that. I didn't know we were going to pick and choose tonight. I thought we're going to have a discussion about this. So I just want to make sure that I just want to make sure that's in the minutes. That's all.
Sure. And that we can put that in the minutes, Dean. But we do have, obviously, we did have a discussion on this. This was not the sole purpose for this meeting. We have other things on this agenda. It is something that was put on the agenda, given the state of COVID-19 and the Delta variant that's going on. So at this point, I just wanted to add that I know this is a very personal emotional decision for many families. I know that no matter what decision the school committee votes on or comes up with, that there are going to be some people who are going to be very unhappy. And, you know, that's no matter what way the vote falls, somebody's not going to be pleased. But we do need to make decisions, you know, based on the information that we have on hand. I am strongly also saying as the chair for this to continue to be on our agendas that we can continue to assess it. And, you know, certainly if there's a time where things have improved, I would gladly like to see no masking. But I think at this point, you know, my personal opinion is, you know, that we do need to vote and agree as a committee. And, you know, basically, I know the constituents that I have heard from have been on both sides of the fence. But I've had more constituents reach out asking for masking. So just wanted to put that out there. So we have a vote and we have a second. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Mike?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Dean?
I'll be a yay until a special meeting that I'll call and invite into Department of Public Health and all all agencies. But I'll be a yay until such time.
And I'm a yay. And I would also like to for the agenda, the next time we do as a regular school committee, talk about this issue, I would appreciate the director of the Board of Health being invited to speak to us also at the meeting. And of course, Kathy Goddatt, we would need your valued opinion as well. All right. So at this point in time, the motion carries. And we will move on to our next meeting agenda, which is the finance update. Michael, can you give us the finance or is Melanie doing a presentation first?
No, it's that's okay. It's not a presentation. I will keep it brief. I just wanted to give an update to everybody in the committee and also those who are watching. Since we've been diligent in in keeping everybody informed as to what our budget has been, I'd like to continue to do that. And so I'd like to give a brief update. So included in the packets that you all have received for tonight's meeting are the fiscal 22 reports that have been updated for both salaries and expenses for our general fund. The column in the center of the page titled SC Original Budget reflects the original budget that was approved by the school committee during the public hearing on May 3rd, 2021. Since then, the mayor has published the city's budget and has appropriated the school's fiscal 22 budget. Salaries were funded over by 1.4 million roughly. I'm going to round it for you. And expenses were funded down by 3.7 million. Adjustments were made to that of the original budget lines to bring this in alignment in order to put this into our system. So for the fiscal 22, the general fund salary budget will be $53,688,340. And the that's our salary budget and the general fund expense budget will be $23,915,946, giving the school a total general fund budget of $77,604,286. This does not include any of the non-net school spending appropriations, such as transportation, that the city has also given us. I've also included the carry forward for our revolving accounts. As you can see, that we were able to carry forward significant balances in our revolving funds. And we have gone ahead and reconciled these balances to the city's balance sheet. So we're very confident in these numbers. So you can see the school's going to be carrying forward a balance of $5,647,757 in our revolving. And as you'll hear from Lorraine, you're she's going to give us an update on the Esser funds and that will also be part of our funding that we will be able to use moving forward. So that was that.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Melanie? I'm going to just call in folks. Sue? You need to unmute.
Why do we? Why do we have a negative? I thought we could not carry a negative balance in the revolving. And I know it's summer school, so how are we going to fund that shortfall?
That's on the city side. That is an issue of a journal entry that hasn't been done. But Jen Reddington, who is the new comptroller over there, is working with us diligently to make that part of our processes. And so she's been great with as long as we have given her the, you know, the correct backup. So I actually have to go back and find where we had voted because on our side, the school side, we don't have a negative because at some point, I don't know if you recall, but we voted that $14,000 be transferred from the special donations bucket in order to cover the negative that had occurred in that balance. And so I'm working with Jen to fix that kind of thing. But right now on the city side, it does look like a negative.
Okay, so you'll give us an update on that.
Absolutely.
So when you say these were reconciled, who were they reconciled to?
The city, it's their balance sheet. So we're reconciling directly to the city balance sheet.
Right, but you just said that that account doesn't balance to the city.
So that's where I'm working with Jen to make sure.
So that's the only account that doesn't balance?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so you might want to put that on here.
Sure. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mike, do you have any questions for Melanie?
I was just going to make a comment about the budget numbers. Just to remind everyone, we have a process where we have to create and approve a revised budget for this year now that we know the actual appropriation. And we'll soon know the actual enrollment. We're close, but as Paula told us earlier, enrollment continues. So on July 1st, we have to put in MUNIS numbers that match the actual appropriation, which means they can't match what we approved back in May because they aren't the two totals are different. So the the document in front of you does not represent that revised budget that we're about to work on. It's simply a bookkeeping necessity to have the the total match the appropriation. It's now the task of the business department and the finance department to come up with a recommendation for the revised budget for the year to bring to the full school committee that's in line with our needs and the actual size of the appropriation, which we will be starting work on immediately. Thanks.
Thank you. Ron, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Everything is basically straightforward. Any explanations have been given.
All right, Peter?
No questions. Thank you, Melanie. But I would just emphasize what what Michael said that, you know, there is still another step, you know, starting basically now. And that these numbers are just to make the bottom lines match what was appropriated.
Isabel?
No questions. Thanks, Mel.
Brandon?
I'm all set with questions. Thanks, Melanie.
Yeah, I think this information would have been very helpful during the budget process, which we eliminated this information. On the insurance, Melanie, can you just talk a little bit about our our insurance, our medical insurance?
Sure.
On the adjustment for that?
Well, the as as Michael just sort of said, the adjustments made were made so that we could put the appropriation that was given to the school in the system. It's not indicative of our budgeting plan.
So did we overestimate our insurance or underestimate?
No, neither. Neither of the above.
So you're right on with it?
That's what we had estimated based on, yeah. And we had included that stuff in our our budget proposal when we gave the slideshow. I believe you can go back and see that.
So if somebody picks up this agenda here and looks under under the insurance line item, what are they to read from that then? 5,200?
Well, I guess they're going to make an assumption, but it's our job to educate them as we're trying to do here in the meeting.
But what would the assumption they would make an assumption? What would the assumption be?
Maybe it would be the same assumption you're making.
I'm not making an assumption. I'm trying to clarify this. This is I'm making my own argument here about what people said earlier. It's right here. All the information is right here. So if somebody goes and looks at this, they're going to make an assumption that we save 2.256 in insurance.
Well, because the expense line was not what we had asked for, we have to take the money from somewhere. And so that line item, for an accounting perspective, is the easiest line item to take it from in order to put it into the system called MUNIS. There's no assumption there that we're not paying our insurance, but if that's the assumption some people might make, I understand where you're coming from.
No, I'm not making an assumption on anything. I'm I I I'm just trying. If somebody opens this up and looks at this. Okay, that's that's the issue I have here is there there isn't an explanation for it. It's just they're just numbers.
Correct.
And I would imagine, I mean, obviously, you've talked about it at this meeting, so they if they are participating, they can hear it. Or they can certainly call and ask if there's any.
Absolutely.
If they are confused.
My door is always open.
Great. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Esser update. Yes, I've asked Lorraine to speak this evening.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Raine.
Thank you for asking me to the meeting tonight. I did provide Paula with an update that she put in the packet. That was based on some questions that had come from various members regarding the what the Esser funds were, when they were to be applied for, and also what we were spending, what we were proposing to spend the money on. So just as a a quick overview, very quick, there are three Esser funding codes. The very first one is originally called the CARES Act. They are now referring to it as Esser 1. That one has been, the grant application was put in, our funding use was approved. And that project duration goes through September 30th of 2022. So we have approximately one more year to finish up that spending. Esser 2 is a project duration that runs through the end of September of 2023. The district put forth a recommendation to DESI for fund use. And it is under review at DESI. Right now, they had a couple of questions that we're providing clarifying information for. And we're expecting that approval at any time. Esser 3 has a project duration through September 30th of 2024. That application is due to DESI on October 4th of this year. So we have not put forth a proposal yet as to what the spending would be. The the district district staff have been working gathering information, been working with BojNado, the building principals, with other stakeholders and with the cabinet. And we will be putting a proposal forward for that deadline of October 4th. For your information, I also did provide the from the federal government guidance, the allowable expenditures that Leominster will be spending Esser 1 and Esser 2 on. So there are a number of them. I I believe you can and I'll read those. I I don't want to assume and and read them for the public, but we have that information for anyone who would like it. Not sure if there's any other very other specific questions people might have for me.
Ron?
Yeah, I I know you. I know you probably already told us this. How much money are we talking about with Esser 1 and Esser 2 and Esser 3 for that matter?
Esser 1 was 1.2 million approximately, so $1,264,000. Esser 2 is approximately $5 million, just under that for Leominster's allocation. And Esser 3 is just a little over $11 million for Leominster's allocation. That's a good question, Ron. They've given us our allocation. This money is is for Leominster Public Schools to spend. The process is that we provide the Massachusetts Department of Education with our narrative as to how we are going to spend it and they govern or give us approval as to how we will spend it. But this money is ours to spend.
And that that would include that would include the necessity of masks and all these other things that were were required that are being required. Yes?
Absolutely. The services and supplies to sanitize the facilities and then personal protective equipment is absolutely one of the areas the federal government allows us to spend this money on.
Now, is this sustainable? I mean, after this, after this runs out, after this runs out, the Esser 1, Esser 2. I mean, after this runs out, after this runs out, the ESER 1, ESER 2, and then we come out to ESER 3, if there's money still left after ESER 1 and 2, are you, I just bit my tongue, are you gonna be able to roll it over into ESER 3? Or no, you have to spend it all?
We do have to spend it all. They've given us a very extensive timeline. So we have one more full year for ESER 1. We have two more years, basically, from now for ESER 2. And we have three years from now to have completely used all of the ESER 3 money.
And how much, and I won't ask another question, I promise you. Of ESER 1, how much money have, I just, by the time, how much money have you spent of ESER 1 so far?
I would have to get that specific information. I'm not carrying that around in my head. I will say, I believe it's about two-thirds of it that has been spent or encumbered to this point. But I'll make a note to get that information to you.
Well, not just to me, but the rest of the, what about, what about, what about, what about ESER 2?
Those funds have not been accessed to use yet. We are still, as with the guidance from the state and the federal government, we're gonna spend all of ESER 1 before we start spending ESER 2 and so forth with ESER 3.
And that'll go for?
Ron, you said no more questions?
I know, because she just, she just picked my brain. Computers or internet connectivity, is that gonna be part of ESER 1 and 2 and 3? Or is that in another land of money?
No, you are right, Ron. It is part of it. Educational technology, including, as you mentioned, the hardware, the devices, and the connectivity are allowable for all three.
Okay. I had another question, but I mean, right, I asked too many questions already. Because the stuff that we were supposed to be voting on later on, the...
We're not voting on ESER money, though.
No, 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 but the stuff that we're supposed to be voting on, the leftovers, the stuff that we, that they're excess, we don't get any, we can't get any monies on that, huh? You know what I'm talking about? The stuff that we discovered from that, from that, one of the principals, the surplus?
The surplus of materials, that surplus, yeah.
The surplus.
The surplus equipment, no.
We don't get any, we can't, we don't get, we can't get any monies out of that, right?
No, no.
All right. It just picked, she just picked my brain on that. I just, I'm sorry.
All right. I'm gonna move on, Ron.
Eileen?
Go ahead. Sue, I was gonna call on you last because you already had a turn.
None on the ESER funds.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I'm talking ESER. I know in finance, we had asked for a breakdown of the ESER funds. You know, how we're spending it, the CARES Act and stuff. I don't recall getting that. You know, we need a spreadsheet of how we spent the money, especially when we gotta report it anyway to the federal government. So is that something we can get?
Certainly. I provided the information from the allowable expenditures tonight. If you would like more detail, I can certainly get that.
Yeah, what I'm looking for is a spreadsheet. Here's the money we got from, you know, this fund and how we spent it. Like, I know we, yeah, I mean, I think that's important because you have to report that to the government as well, correct?
Certainly.
Yeah, so I mean, it's something that should be readily available, right?
Certainly. I will provide, yes, I don't have it with me tonight, but we certainly can put it together.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mike?
I have no further questions about ESER money at this moment.
Okay, Melissa?
So just a quick, quick question, really. So if I understand the process, CARES, ESERS 1 is money spent through September of '22. So that will include, like, special ed funds, I would anticipate, of, for like, services that we weren't able to provide at the time. And then will that cover, like, as we're reevaluating kids mid-September, if we need to increase services because of potential loss? Or services for next summer to be able to offer, can that also come from the ESERS 1?
Yes, it can come from all three. So one of the, one of the components is funding that would be authorized by IDEA, which is the federal special education law. That would, anything that is allowable under IDEA is also an allowable expense under ESER.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Peter?
I just have one question. If you can refresh my memory. I think ESER 1, they were pretty, you know, liberal in terms of allowing to, like, use money differently than what the application necessarily was. Is ESER 2 and 3 stricter? Or do they still allow for, you know, if circumstances change and we need to use the money for something else, that's allowed, we have to reapply, but it's a possibility, correct?
Yes, there is an amendment process. It's the same amendment process for all of our federal grants, but you are correct. We're making decisions now as far as where we would like to spend the money for the next three years. If we have things that change every single day, it seems, and we do have the ability to request an amendment, provide a narrative, and the state federal government, or, excuse me, the state government, I'm getting tired, would be, would review that for us, correct?
Okay, thank you.
All right, Isabel?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Brandon?
I have no questions. I just wanna echo the point that Sue made. I was going to say the same thing. If we had a document of exactly where money was spent from each ESER fund, it would be helpful. I think people have asked us about it anyways. This way it'll all be in one place to say, this is exactly what we spent ESER 1 on, exactly what we spent ESER 2 on, and going forward.
All right, Dean?
Yeah, I'd agree. A more detailed breakdown. And then the carryover of the $5 million, do we indicate at all how that would be spent?
Yes, we have provided the state with a budget, and they've asked us for some clarification. That's ESER 2. And so we have not spent any of that yet, but we do have a budget proposal into the state for that one. And I think it would be important for us to have the state's approval before we disseminate that in case it changes.
I disagree. It's a public document. I think we should get a copy of that and just mark draft on it. I don't think we have the option of saying that a document submitted from one agency to another is a private document. I think that you could put a draft on it, but I don't believe you could just say that it's not a public document.
My concern, and I guess I wasn't thinking of putting a draft on it, is that people, you know, until it's approved, it doesn't mean that that's where the money's actually going to be spent. So I would want to caution people about that.
That's every grant that we sign off on. I mean, every grant we submit is a public document. We don't know if we're gonna get the money or they're gonna allow us to spend it on it, right? I mean, that's everything. I'd like to see the document.
So anybody else? I think I've asked everyone. So thank you very much, Lorraine, for your presentation, and we'll look forward to getting the follow-up documentation.
Certainly.
All right, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes for June 21, 21.
I make a, do I? I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 21, 2021.
Second.
All right, does anybody have any omissions, errors, discussion? All right, with that, it'll be a roll call vote. Mike?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay as well. I think as the executive session minutes, we have not... I don't know whether we've, I don't, we haven't reviewed, well, I don't know if we're ready to make it a motion to approve those or not to release those. I don't know whether we need further discussion on those minutes. Dean, do you have a?
I thought we were all set to release them.
I don't know. I wasn't sure if everybody had a chance or opportunity to look at them.
I only sent them to you.
Oh, to me? Okay. So then, obviously, we can't vote on them if they only went to me. They need to go to the entire committee to review before we can make a decision because we may want to release them all, or maybe there's some that would not be appropriate to release at this time.
The only thing that's not releasable are things that are not acted on.
People need to, right, but you need to see it. You can't vote on something, Dean. You've been very clear in that, and many...
I understand.
Without seeing it.
Right, but you said you need time to review them. The only thing that you can't...
Yes, you all need to see them, is what I was asking for. You can't vote on them without you reviewing them.
Well, did you see them?
Yes, I saw them. I didn't realize they didn't go out to the entire committee.
Okay.
I'll send them to the whole committee.
Eileen, Sue was raising her hand.
You muted.
You muted, Irene.
I'm sorry about that. My screen just crashed.
I was absent at the June 21st meeting, and I never got the superintendent's evaluation and the contract for the business manager. So can I get copies of those?
Yes, they should have been in your packet.
No, well, we, no, we didn't release, the evaluation was not given out until the meeting, remember?
Right.
Yeah, no, so I missed the meeting, so I would like the evaluation and I would like the, right, I would like the contract for the business manager as well. So if you could send that to me.
Chris? Go. All right, so at this point, we're moving on to subcommittee reports, finance. Is there anything else, Mike, to add?
Very little. The first finance meeting of the school year will be sometime between now and our September 7th school committee meeting. We'll certainly have a meeting at 6 o'clock on the 7th. I haven't yet determined whether we'll need one before that. You already got in your packet tonight warrants that will be reviewed at that meeting, and we'll come up on, we'll come to the full school committee on the 7th. We'll start the process of the revised budget. Beyond that, there's not really anything to report right now. Oh, I should remind everybody, all school committee members are welcome to attend finance meetings. There's been some talk about whether people are understanding what's going on there. Would like more information. You're certainly welcome to attend. Or you've got some of the information that we'll be looking at is already in the packet tonight. If you have any questions, feel free to send them to any of us. We'll make sure we get them answered during the meeting.
Do you anticipate, Michael, will that be in person? Is that the goal? Or do you think some of the financing things might be?
That's a very good question, Melissa, that I don't yet have the answer to. I'll consult with Superintendent and Melanie and make a determination about what's the proper format for the meeting.
Okay, only because I just need, just to make sure we all get the invite because sometimes we get it very late in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. And policy, Ron?
No, we hadn't, we had no meeting, no policy meeting at all.
Right. All right, so action items, we have surplus equipment. If I can have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the surplus equipment. Item 5A, and you'll see on your packet, it's obsolete and broken equipment list for recycling for 818. Oh, today, today's the 16th, why does it say 18? And there was another paper that came from the principal. I'm looking at my cell phone. Recycling, it came from... What's his name? Somebody help me. What was his name when he sent the thing to us?
I sent you something today from Kyle White?
Yeah, 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 that's right. Kyle White, that's it. Bingo.
Yeah, and it was just an addition to the stuff that I'd included in the packet.
Right.
Right, some more surplus equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Broken. All right, any questions, comments?
Just a quick question. As a non-tech person, I assume this isn't like relatively new equipment that we got under, no, okay, thank you.
All right, it's gonna be a voice vote. Mike?
Yay.
Melissa?
Sorry, I had to tell a child to hush. Yes, yay.
Brad?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Motion carries. And I think when we talked about the budget, we had come to the consensus that we still needed to finish working on it before we voted on the final budget because we need to know where everything is earmarked for. Let's see, so voting on obsolete class funds, Superintendent, if you would like to?
Melanie?
Sure, Melanie, give us an update?
Sure. In the packet, I've included a memo to explain what the policies and the mass general law is when it comes to class funds. So it's in the packet. You can certainly peruse it, read it. If you have any questions, let me know. But the, tonight, I'm taking all of the class funds that are basically obsolete going back to 2009, which never got distributed and never got voted on as to what we wanted to do with those funds. And so they're just sitting there. And part of our cleanup with the student activities is to get and make sure that we are more on top of these things and that policies are in place going forward. That gives everybody the right information on how to distribute those funds. So tonight, I'm actually just looking to get a vote on the class funding. From, it ranges from 2009 to 2021, and the amount in each class ranges from $4 all the way up to $3,000. But in total, the funds are $9,578.35. My suggestion as to how these funds could be used, there are a lot of regulations in place that keep it from doing a lot of things, but we can distribute those funds evenly amongst the classes that are currently in the high school. And I think that that would be a great start for them in the new year to have some seed money to be able to do the things that they want to do.
Melanie, what about, I was thinking scholarship funds?
Yep. Yeah, I looked into that. It's a bit more stringent on the rules and regulations behind that, on the lines of equity, of course, and how that gets done. It's certainly something I can look further into, but as of right now, I was looking more for the route that would help all the students that are in the high school at this point in time as opposed to making them wait until that process came into play.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm just gonna run through the last round. I saw your hand up first.
Yeah, I, it ran along the same lines, a little bit like you were saying, Eileen. The monies, and Melanie was saying that there are certain rules that are stringent.
Yeah.
What about, what about, can it be dispersed equitably? It is $9,578. Can it be distributed equitably into student activity funds? Student activity clubs, or have you already looked in that, or?
It can certainly be done that way. Of course, the amount of clubs that we run are sufficient. So the amount of money that would go to each club would not be a large amount, but if that's the will of the committee, we can certainly do that. That is another option.
Or the, what's that, that, the group that... Or the, what's that, that the group that the student, not the student government, but the the honor society. What's the, say, thing? National Honor Society. Would they, could they? Somebody jump in and help me, help me.
So, so Ron, I would think since that's like an act, you know, that would be preferring one, like instead of student government. As opposed to something that would be equitable. So for instance, giving equitable amount to each class kind of evens the playing field. If we gave something to each activity, we have so many of them, they'd probably only get, you know, a few bucks. So that probably won't make a dent. Scholarships, but certainly I'm more than happy to vote. Everyone.
You know, some club that is in need of financial.
Right. I think every club would say they're in need, Ron, so.
I know, I know, but I'm just, I'm just, I'm just grasping for straws, you know, I mean. Because like I think Melanie was saying, was it, were you saying, Eileen, seed money, you know?
No, Melanie was saying that.
Right.
Let's hear from other folks. Any thoughts?
Uh, I'm fine with that plan. I just have a question about what the plan would be moving forward. So if this class has funds, how are we going to deal with this moving forward? So we're not, you know, 11 years behind.
Right, exactly. So I've included in that memo what is practice. And, you know, you can read through and again, as the committee decides, you can agree with it or not, not agree with it. And we can make our own policies moving forward because at this time, we don't have a policy in place for that, for this, this specific thing. So we certainly can.
Right. I would think that that's something that the, should be remanded to the policy subcommittee to, you know, come up with a policy and then, you know, bring it to the full committee.
Absolutely.
All right. Sue?
Okay, so my question is, we used to have alumni funds for each class. That was the money that the classes had collected and any leftover. Is that what this money is?
Yes. The funding was never requested by the students. Normal practice is that the students have 90 days to request funds. And the funds would be then transferred to a bank account of their choice, reputable, of course, under the name of the president and one of the other officers from that class. And they could use it moving forward for, of course, reunions and other things of that nature.
Okay, I, there is a, there was a policy.
Okay.
And, I mean, I don't know if you recall, but this came before us because they, we had several bank accounts with different classes of the different years. And we were told we had to combine them. So I'm looking at your revolving account and I don't see an alumni account, which.
No, they're not. Those are, those are listed under the student activities revolving for each individual school.
But that's not what we had originally had, and it was called an alumni fund. And so you have classes, I can tell you right now, my neighbor belongs to one of the classes that donate scholarships every year. So I, I think we need to do a little more research on this. I, I believe we do have a policy. I'm kind of surprised that we have this many years that have not.
Me too.
You know, so obviously somebody dropped the ball, but I definitely would like to research this more. I think there is something out there. I'm curious on the funds. I do believe there was a revolving account held by the city and we used to report it. So I. I think they are two different things. I think the city does have accounts for alumni funds, which they collect for every year. Like you're saying, your neighbor may belong to or contribute to. And they do give out alumni scholarships every year from those things. I think these little pieces were class funds, which were held in our student activity accounts. And I believe what was supposed to happen is what Mel said, within 90 days, they were supposed to go into a different account with the president. Over the past few years, I don't think it's happened like that. But I, I do remember the time when this did start happening, and I believe through John Richard and the city, they came before us and said they wanted to get rid of all of these little accounts and collapse them into one. And we did that back then, yes. But the practice, I don't think, carried on with our former business administrators. Okay, but can you get your hands on that document or when we did? I can look. Yeah, because. I can look in the minutes to see when we did that. It may have been 10 to to 14 years ago, I think that we did do that. But I, I don't think they're the same things. I think the alumni funds are very different than. Well, that's why I asked that question initially. Because, right, like the classes donate a gift to the school. Alumni funds, I thought was money that was passed on from those classes to, and then we just started pooling it all into one fund. Well, if we could just look into that, because I definitely know that something was done. You know, rather than reinvent the wheel, I, I do believe we had something in place. Obviously, we haven't followed through on it, but.
Yeah, but with, with student activities, the mass general law doesn't allow for those funds to be distributed to anybody else other than the students.
Okay. All right. Isabel, any questions? Romans?
No, I'm up.
Peter?
Yes, I'm all for what was proposed, but out of curiosity, I mean, our next, our next item is the banners and the Lemmister High School with the Blue Devils. Is that something that we could potentially use? I mean, it's kind of the equivalent of a class gift or a senior gift. If we could roll that over, is that, is that possible?
Again, if that's what the committee decides as a whole, then yes, the money can be spent on that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would consider that as well. But thank you.
Sure.
All right, Ronnie?
My only question is if there was a policy in the past, and if Chris can find it, whether we have to revive it, bring it back from wherever it is and make an amendment to it, see what it, see what, see what the exact wording is. And also, see what other districts do with these student activity accounts that have lain dormant for a while. Because the dormant, the dormancy in itself, doesn't it gather interest?
No, not in student activities. The, the interest is kept over at the city hall and it goes into the larger fund.
And how much money are we talking about? Yeah.
I don't have that at, at hand, but.
No, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but.
No, that's okay. That's okay. It's not something I have on hand, but it is something we are looking into as we reconcile through the student activity accounts. We are talking with the comptroller over at the city to figure out where that money does get booked, but I know it is in one of the larger savings, not their checking.
Okay. But just try to dig it out from the policy, Chris, wherever it's hidden.
I don't think we have a policy on that, but I think it was something that we were asked to do. I, I don't recall a policy on it, but I can look. Right. And we're thinking that the class funds is different than the alumni funds.
I know, but that book that, that Chris sent to us with our packet. Now I'm gonna have to dig into this, see if there's anything about student activity, class accounts, is there anything that MASC tells us about?
Most of the guidelines that we're looking at are from DESI. So we are using DESI guidelines. That's where this memo comes from, directly from the DESI guidelines on this.
All right, I'll just, go ahead.
So just a couple of things, just I've already heard. So one, I just want to make sure we put this on the policy subcommittee agenda for something coming up for future spending. I agree with what Peter has suggested as well about discussion of the expenses that have been requested for the high school. And then also just a thought that if we decide to distribute amongst the classes that are current. I would like to see us maybe look at prioritizing the junior, senior grades because I feel like they've lost some time in being able to fundraise just because they haven't all been together and been able to do activities to fundraise. So, thank you.
Dean, any thoughts?
Yeah, where was the audit at? We were having the student accounts audited. We appropriated a substantial amount of money. And where's that at?
It was never an audit.
Whatever they called it.
Okay. I just want to make sure because the audit is very different. I actually have an update that I can send out to the committee from the company that's doing it. So I can email that to everybody tomorrow. I just received that today from him. It was just too late to put in the packet, but I will forward that out to everybody. So everybody has an update as to where that's at.
Does that have anything to do with this, this line item, this gender item?
No, I mean, in, I guess in a roundabout way, it's part of the cleanup process that we are learning and, and, you know, making sure that we're doing from that.
So it doesn't mention our, our obsolete class ones in the, in these, whatever it is that you're calling it. It's not an audit, but what is it exactly you put in for the funding for?
It was a review of our student activities. And they are in the review, looking at all reconciling items, and these class accounts were part of that reconciling item.
With.
Okay.
All right. So just a quick question. The, our next item is to vote on is coming out of potentially funds, if that's the will of the committee. You know, what is the advantage or disadvantage to utilize the Kendall funds for the items requested as opposed to the obsolete class accounts?
I don't, I don't see an advantage or disadvantage either way. I think that it's, again, if it's the will of the committee to use those funds, then these funds can be used to pay for that. It's not necessarily what I would suggest because I do believe the money needs to go back to the students and not necessarily to an inanimate object, so to speak. I think it would benefit the students more to be in their pockets in order to cover expenses that they will have coming up.
And I think we don't have any other ability to give them any so-called seed money other than this avenue where we do have the ability of a different avenue through the Kendall funds to get those items requested.
I mean, we were lucky enough, we were lucky enough last year in all of what was going on that we didn't use any of our Kendall funds. So we still have the full year's worth plus what we carried forward from the prior year in our Kendall funds. So that was, that was a bonus.
So what would your recommendation be, Melanie, to, to us?
As I said, my recommendation would be to split it among the classes that are there currently at the school so that they have some money. Like, you know, someone pointed out, I'm not sure who it was, but I didn't have the opportunity to do their fundraising because they were virtual and they weren't really in person. So my suggestion would be to make up for that and see if we can't give them a little bit of seed money that they weren't able to collect last year.
Well, if we're taking motions, I would like to make a motion based on her recommendation.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'm going to do a voice vote. Dean? Brandon? Sue?
So, wait, question. We're not looking into what we have established previously? Are we throwing that idea out the window? I thought we were researching.
So, so we are going to research that. They're saying that it was different funds. The alumni fund is different than the class funds. But we do need to. So I think that's important for all of us to understand. We'll get that information.
Okay. So I'll, I'm not gonna, I won't support it until I find out more information, I guess.
So you're gonna be a nay. Isabel? Peter?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Mike?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Motion carries. All right, the next on our agenda is.
Eileen, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
So just as a, a point, you know, one of my pet peeves is that we pay for things or we've had what it done, what it's done, and for some reason, they disappear. So we don't have them anymore. So I've been, I spent a lot of time this summer going through my papers. And I did find, we did have a student activity audit done. Now, I think it was in 2014. I actually have the document. I have who did it. And I don't have the report, but I'm thinking that we should be able to go back to the auditor. Is that right, Dean? We should be able to get a report from an order, you know, because my concern is we keep reinventing the wheel. Now, the audit that was done of student activities was procedures. And it was all done at a time when we had some things going on and there were questionable things, but procedures were already done. So I'm just concerned, and I want to throw that out there, that I have the document that was solicited and, and who did it. And, you know, I'd like that explored. Before we spend all this money on another audit, I, I, you know, it's frustrating. An audit, or, you know, if they, if they put procedures together, which I believe they did, why are we paying for it again? So I, I would just like to make that point and, and, you know, let's take the time to look up our history of what we have. And I'm not sure. Maybe there's a fault in how we file things. I, I don't know. But we should be able to put our hands on things that were done previously. Do we have like all the audits together? I don't know.
Yeah, any audit that was done, I have the ability to call the auditor and, and request.
Document, I have who did it. And I'm like, because I knew it was done. It's just that, you know, but that should be something in the school department. They should have those records. So
I agree.
Maybe, maybe as a, as a school department, we need to look at how you guys file things and, you know, because those are important records. We shouldn't be reinventing the wheel. That's all.
Right.
So I will provide that information and, you know, maybe we can save some money. Hopefully.
Right, except for.
I think it was done by Sullivan. Who's doing the one that you just solicited?
Well, she's not doing an audit.
Not an audit.
Well, whatever, you said it's not an audit, but I thought we said it was, but it's a student activity. Who's doing it?
This one is done by CLA. It's the same company that we use for the third party for Sean.
Okay, this one was Sullivan, whatever. So I, I have, you know, like I said, I have it, and I think we need to look into it. And if we can call the company and say, hey, give us what we paid for, you know, we might not have to, you know, reinvent the wheel.
Yep. If you can forward that to me, I can certainly call them and look at that further.
All right. So at this point, we have the vote on the use of the Kendall funds, Superintendent.
Yes, the high school principal is, is requesting from the school committee to allow him to use $13,882.57 to sort of beautify the high school a little bit. Give it, you know, that look that just gives some pride and sets the tone for the new school year. We had made flags, which you could see going to many of the high schools from the, the lamp posts. And we had a horrible, horrible windstorm and all of them are gone. So we have commissioned with another company that can make the signs, install the signs, really do, you know, an A job, A plus job on those. The one thing I would consider is he only put in for CTI and LHS. I would like to consider having an LCE sign made as well, should you approve of this. He also is asking to get staff T-shirts for the beginning, beginning of school year as a welcoming endeavor for when students come in on the first day.
Any, I'm gonna just call people if they have any questions or comments. Mike?
I agree, wholeheartedly.
I agree wholeheartedly that if we do this, we must include LCE. That however, changes the price to a number that I now don't know. Do we have an estimate of? What that would change it to? Are we comfortable with an open-ended? Include them? Is there a way to do that without changing the price? I don't know the answers to these questions.
Mike, if, if I could, I'm on the call, um, it will not adjust the price. Those are standard LC. CTI and Lemmonster High School one, so they can just add, add a new one.
Okay.
So they're gonna be able to make three, um, flags as opposed to two for the same amount?
Correct.
All right, my second question is, um. I'm trying to channel Nona, who is always a hawk about any spending from the Kendall fund.
Right.
I think I hear her saying we're supposed to spend that on the students.
No, well.
I know it has to be high school. I just want to be, want to clarify. I want to make sure that, for example, that the staff T-shirts is an allowable. Kendall fund expense. I want to make sure we do this, hoping, hoping to get a clarification that this is all within the. The purview of what the rules for Kendall fund.
That's a good point.
Melanie, your superintendent, do you know?
I did read the initial documents that, um, did come when they did sign, uh, the initial Kendall thing. And it just said, uh, for the high school. It did not say anything else. It was just a one-sentence thing.
Okay. Those are my two questions. So I'm satisfied.
All right, Melissa.
Would the. I guess I'm just questioning, do we have, we don't have to go out to bid for something of this price? No.
Um, there's, I believe that if it's all coming from the same company. That as long as they are, um, separate and not identical products, then they are each going to be considered separately. So as long as it's under ten thousand dollars, um, it does not have to go out to bid.
All right, thank you.
Brad?
Yeah, um, I was looking at the picture that was sent to us. And one says thirty feet. By thirty feet, eight inches and you know, and twenty-six feet, two inches. So which one are we voting on? Or do we, uh? Am I asking, uh, it doesn't make any sense, my question?
Ron, the top display is the thirty-foot long one and where home of the Blue Devils is only twenty-six feet long.
I see. So they're saying for comparison, is that, is that what it is?
Right, so there's the lettering underneath Lemmonster High School is smaller and shorter. That's only six, twenty-six feet long. The first one, Lemmonster High School, larger lettering at thirty feet long. They have two.
So it's both, Ron.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Well, I was just.
Yeah.
I'm just asking guys, you know.
Yep, no, good question.
And.
Oh, go ahead.
Did anybody, was there, is there, is there, is there, is there gonna, is there gonna be a, a? A visual of what is gonna be up there? Or is it just, uh, the term? Lemmonster Blue Devils or Lemmonster High School or? Dubs, are you there?
What do you mean a visual?
Well, the, that, this flag or draped, what is it gonna have on it?
There's a picture in your packet, Ronnie.
The picture is just, the picture is this, Lemmonster High School, but the, uh.
Ron, the banners will be on each, on each light post and the. When, when we renovated the high school, the Lemmonster High School sign was taken down and never put back up for whatever reason. So we want to get that back up for the letters.
All right, okay, now you got my answer. Okay, okay, gotcha. All right, sorry about that, guys.
That's all right. Peter?
Uh, no, no, my, my only question has already been asked about the, the Kendall fund usage.
Isabel?
Mine too. I'm always channeling, um, Ms. Nona Ogila when we talk about the Kendall fund. So, um, no, my questions have been asked.
Sue?
My question is, we're not gonna have sponsored by on that, are we?
We aren't, um, I'm gonna be really honest with you. This was, if it was voted down, we were gonna send it out to see if families wanted to. Buy them and sponsor them, so.
I thought you were running a business on the side. You were gonna put.
That was my original.
Pay, right?
Right, caller, so get ready. I'm waiting for that check tomorrow morning.
Okay, um, no, and, and the other question again was, is, is. Michael, you said Nona, you can hear Nona in this conversation. I think, what was the amount, fifteen thousand? I just came across the email. That's why I, it would, yeah, it was like fifteen thousand is the cap or something, right? I don't know. Okay.
Brandon?
No questions.
All right, Dean?
Yes, um. I don't know, if it's an option to purchase a banner, I'd be proud. I'm a graduate of the high school. I'd be thrilled to sponsor a banner if, 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 if it's, I, I know it's gonna involve some work. But, um, it might, I, I think you'd be surprised at how many people would love to support, you know, to, to, uh, sponsor a banner, but. If it's, if it's not an option, then, um.
No, it's, it's definitely an option. That's kind of where I was going on the first one and kind of echoing the veterans downtown, to be honest with you. Because I think that's such a prideful thing. Um, I can look into that if you want.
You know, I, I'd love to support. I think the, the more community interest and support you can get, just, just. Shows the other communities that visit our schools, how much support they really do have.
I agree, I agree.
There are a lot of alumni that I think would be, you know, proud to, um, you know, sponsor a banner. I know it's gonna take some work and it's, it's some. Logistics, but, you know, uh, the business courses at the high school or CTEI or. The, uh, Santa Facciance, maybe there's a group that would, uh, take care of the logistics there, but. Um, and then if you can't sell them all, then, um, use.
Yeah, I mean, that, I guess that might be an option is to put it out there and whatever, if we don't, there's about thirty-five, I think, polls.
I don't think you'll have a problem selling thirty-five banners.
I mean, each banner is how much?
Some, somewhere around two-ten, I think. And, you know, it's, it's, we kept it in line with Timmy Grotsky and I said. You know, uh, it's a spring-loaded bottom of the, of the banner, which we talked about. I know the superintendent talked about the windstorm. And he kind of said to me, Doug, I'm not going anywhere. I'm around the corner. If we got a problem, put it back up.
Right, I mean, there's the installation and the labor and all other things on these, um. Invoices that you gave us, but in any case, um, my two senses is that, um, I think that. The banners certainly would, um, look very nice and professional. Um, on our high school and the light poles as well as the signage. And if we have the funds through the Kendall fund. I think that, uh, since we didn't use it last year, we have enough money. I would be in favor for using that and hitting up families for other kinds of things because we're always. Um, going to community members and family members for all kinds of things to support our schools. And we have a very generous community. Both, uh, people who are alumni, people who are currently in, um, the school system, but also from our business partners. And I feel like we hit them up all the time and we'll probably keep hitting them up. So if we're able to, uh, use some other money. That's available, that we should use it. So that's my two cents.
I agree with Eileen. We have to be careful not to, not to, not to subscribe, not to promote donor fatigue.
So I need a, a, a motion and then we can vote on it. Um, Melissa?
Just real, go ahead. Just a quick. Sorry, just a quick question. Do, do we have an idea of how quickly if we approve this, it can get turned around? Because if it's a question of they can do it in two to four weeks, I would be much more supportive of. The whole Prague, the whole request now, or if it's gonna take a few months, then let's see what we can get for fundraising for the banners.
I don't have the turnaround. I can get that to you tomorrow though, to be honest with you, if you want. And I know you have to vote tonight, so that's not very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I know that, I mean, depending on obviously how busy they are, they're usually able to. Um, I mean, I've had signs for other kinds of things and, and it's a pretty quick turnaround unless.
Yeah.
They're really.
It just changes the mock-up, I would think too. So one way or the other. All right.
Why, why are we deciding, why are we deciding how people want to contribute? If, if somebody may not want to, um, contribute in one way, but they want to contribute in a banner. We're talking thirty-five banners. Put it out there tonight, social media, superintendent sends out a newsletter on Sundays, put it out there. And I, I, I'm pretty sure you'll have thirty-five responses pretty quickly on people that might want to support a banner. Put a number on it, tell people what. You know, are you interested or not? This is how much it's gonna be. Um, we're talking a few days here. I don't think it's gonna take us a month to figure out how many people would sponsor a banner. So, and why take my right away if I want to sponsor a banner? What, what, use the Kendall funds for something else. I, I, I don't see the issue here of telling me I'm gonna have donor fatigue. If that's what I want to donate to, then I, that's what I want to donate to.
So I guess what I would then like to counter, um, Dean, is that we give a very short timeframe. Because we can't have this piecemeal. I don't want like three banners this week and six months from now, four more banners. I think that it needs to be done uniformly and all at once. Um, and to have a short turnaround. And so what we can do is make a motion. That we approve this amount of money and, and not to exceed this amount of money. And it may be less than that if, um. You know, folks, you know, come forward. So we're, we're approving a ceiling. Um, we still also didn't really talk about the staff shirts. Uh, you know, I guess I would be okay with that, but I would have preferred it to be for children as opposed to staff. Um, whether it's the senior shirts or something, but, um, I get that you're trying to, you know, welcome folks, but I like it when it's, uh. When it goes for the, in any case, so that's what would be my suggestion for a motion is that we approve up to. Pending the, um. Response from the community.
I can make that motion. That he's described. I, I move that we approve the, uh, use of Kendall funds for this. Up to, um, what's left after donations. I think, I think that covers it.
And then would we say of like a week's, a reasonable timeframe to get the message out and get it back or two weeks? I would imagine we want this pretty close to the beginning of. You know, sometime in September, early October.
May I ask for an amendment, amendment to this, to Michael's amendment? If we find, if we, if we, if we find through donors. That we're able to raise more than this, we can save the Kendall money for something else.
Right, that's what we're doing is we're doing up to this amount pending, you know, donors and it may not, it won't exceed this amount, but hopefully it'll be much less.
So the first, the first use it would be from the donors and not this.
Right.
Yep.
Right, so my assumption is that since we want to do this to welcome people, that everyone has a short timeframe in mind. So. My preference was not to artificially choose a timeframe myself in the motion and just simply rely on people to be doing this in a. Timely manner because I don't hear anybody saying, let's wait. So I would just approve, I, I would, my motion is just we approve up to the amount requested. As needed to fill in any gap after donations.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. I'm gonna do a voice vote, Mike.
Yay.
Melissa.
Yay.
Ron.
Yay.
Peter.
Yay.
Isabel.
Yay.
Sue.
Hey.
Yeah, Sue. Brandon.
Yay.
Dean?
Yes, and I want to make sure that's fair for everybody so that it goes out. And all the same mechanisms we communicate with parents, whether it's the Sunday, uh, email from the superintendent or. Whatever vehicle the various schools use to PTOs or whatever, so that it's fair. So nobody comes in later and says, you know, I didn't know about it. I think we gotta use all that, um, you know, we, we sold three tonight, so we're down to thirty, uh. We're already down. So there you go. Let's get it by the end of the night. Let's get three more sold.
Yep, so, and I would be.
You want one right there? Okay, I got four sold for you.
So the, the motion is, it has carried. And we're putting Dean in charge of fundraising from now on.
Thank you, Coach Thirty-One.
All right, um, so now, uh, we go to newer old business. Um, the HR report is in our packet. Does anybody have any? Questions about that?
Thank you for the report, by the way.
So.
Just quickly counted, we have thirty new positions. Is that about right? Which is good, right?
Yes, very good.
Thirty, so thirty new positions you filled. Okay, and how many were you looking for?
Uh, forty-six, so we still have a few open and, uh, we've had a few people leave in the last twenty-four hours. So there are still changes. So Jim Riley will be speaking to us in executive session about the HR report as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Brandon?
I'm open.
Okay, um, anybody else have any comments about the HR report before we, uh, move on?
Some schools have LED, uh, lit, lit electronic signs. I suggest you put up there, many towns I, I go through have used those electronics billboard signs, electronic signs to promote the fact that. School department's looking for, um, you know, employees.
Thank you. Um, all right, the next thing is in the enrollment report. That was as of last, uh, Thursday or Friday. As I said, today, we have a lot of records that we still haven't been able to put into the system. So the number's going up every day. We're headed in the right direction, so it looks good and we're hoping to get back to at least around our sixty-two hundred if possible. All right, school committee dates, it's in the packet for everyone. Sue?
You know, it looks like our first day back is Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur, and I thought we checked the schedule. I, I thought that was one of our goals. Was not to have it on one of the Jewish holidays.
Um, I did not.
I brought that up, I brought that up at the meeting that we approved the bud, uh, the calendar.
Yeah, and I thought our policy was we weren't gonna do that.
That's correct.
So I, I mean, I know Labor Day is late this year and that's on a Tuesday, but I, I just happened to look at my calendar when Ron was talking about a meeting. Our next meeting in Rosh Hashanah, I, is it, yeah, that came up.
I have Rosh Hashanah on, um, the sixth. Which is Labor Day.
And that, yeah, that's Labor Day, right?
Right, and that's Rosh Hashanah begins on sundown, um, on Monday.
I have, I have Rosh Hashanah on the seventh. And it's day one, two, and three. So the seventh to the ninth are, are the Jewish holidays and then. Yom Kippur is the sixteenth. So I, I mean, I just want to make that point because we usually do not, we uphold the Jewish holidays, but.
Hashanah is the sixth through the eighth. It starts on Labor Day and it ends sundown the eighth. So it is meeting right in the middle.
Rosh Hashanah Eve is the sixth, but Rosh Hashanah is the seventh.
So did you want to change it?
Well, I, I think, I mean, I think we got a, you know, whatever the committee wants to do, but.
I asked this question before we voted on the schedule, because we've been through this and.
And I don't, I think it was just oversight, Dean. I don't think it was anybody's intention, so.
So do you want to make it to, um.
A day, the thirteenth?
Can we not do the thirtieth?
The thirtieth of September?
No, you're talking about the thirtieth of August.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know the administrative staff must be having particularly long days then. But if we don't move it to the, either the ninth. Or the thirtieth, then we're pushing it out four weeks practically for a meeting.
Right, so you could, or you could do the thirteenth, which conflicts with city council, but. I'm not sure if that's.
But then it's four weeks for a meeting at the beginning of a school year.
Well, I'm fine with the thirtieth. Are other folks fine with the thirtieth?
August thirtieth.
August thirtieth, I mean, that's, um.
Is that, that's a, that's a Monday?
Or.
I guess the question is, is the administration okay with it? I mean. What, what do we have? You know, I mean, what do we, school won't have started, so there's not gonna be any reports.
Right.
It's, I mean, if anything, I think, I think the thirteenth might make more sense just because school overstarted, we will have information to share. I don't, that would be my gut, but.
I second that.
What about Thursday, the, what about Thursday, the ninth? Is that not, is that not a day that people can do? I mean, I, I get that we usually do Mondays. I just, I'm, I'm a little leery about conflicting with city council.
Well, we've done that before. We've had, you know, we've had meetings on city ca, I mean, we, we have just because of the nature of, you know, like Patriot Staples on the third week, so I think we bump it to the, I don't know.
How about the tenth on the Tuesday, just because when we are trying to promote this to livestream?
Tuesday, the tenth is a, I mean, the tenth is, um, a Friday on September, and I prefer not to do it on a Friday.
Fourteenth?
So the fourteen, what day is that?
Tuesday.
I have a different meeting on the fourteenth.
Well, so what about Thursday, the ninth? Can everybody make it Thursday, the ninth?
Fine.
That's fine.
That's good, sure, what the heck?
So we'll change it to Thursday, the ninth. Chris, can you make sure that we get the, um, city hall for that day?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. All right, I was just putting it in my book.
All right, um, so at this point, any, um, thing on the remote learning? Lorene? I'm hoping you're still awake, Lorene.
I am. So the guidance from the State Department of Education continues to require all students to be educated in school. As Paula mentioned earlier this evening, the Leamester Public Schools are more than eager to have all of our students back. That being said, though, there are still a very small number of students and families who have challenges and/or risk factors that affect their ability to be in school. The Office of People Personnel, um, that would be, um, Kim Woodford, and our office, that would be myself and Renee, are working very closely with these families in specific individual cases to determine that the best way to handle the needs of those children. So we will continue to advocate with the Department of Education. We will continue to seek guidance from, um, our legal, uh, authorities uh, and investigate as many options as we can. But right now, we do feel confident that we are able to take care of the needs of the, the small number of families that have come to us with individual requests. Any questions?
Nope. No, thank you very much, Lorene. Um, so at this time, we need to enter executive session and we will not be returning. So what will happen, just for the general public to know, is.
Eileen, I, I have another.
You have another, um, older new business? Okay, let me just finish my sentence and then we'll go back to it. All right, so we'll go back to our, finish our older new business, but just for the viewing public to know, when we go into executive session, we'll be closing down the Zoom and our executive session will be, um, uh, on Google Meet's or whatever, um, and we won't be returning. But Michael, you had more, I'm sorry, with, um, older new business?
It's okay. Uh, it's just, it's a thing that occurred to me today. Um, so it's not, I'm not gonna make a motion or have a vote, but, um, one of the uses of, one of the potential uses of ESER money is to help with student re-engagement in school, since they were remote so much of last year. And as I've said before, I've always felt, despite our intentions, that activity fees and athletic fees are an apparent barrier to participation. Though I would like to hear from the administration whether covering those fees this year could be done out of ESER funds at the next meeting, so that we could then discuss it and decide whether that's something, if it's allowable, could decide whether it's a thing we want to do. So to be clear, I'm not asking us to change the policy. I'm asking whether we can use ESER funds to cover student fees so that everyone can freely participate in whatever they wanna participate in and hopefully get as many students as possible engaged in school. Because we know for many students, engagement in some kind of extracurricular is the hook that gets them engaged in all school. That was it.
All right, um, my, uh, husband has reminded me that on the ninth is the Pittsburgh, um, Leamester Football Game. So just to let folks know that, uh, that's, uh, could potentially be a conflict for some, I'm not sure that is for anybody on the committee.
So if we're gonna have a discussion about using any funds and it's gonna come from the school committee for the ESER, then I think we should just open it up to all schools for everybody, first, uh, parent, uh, school councils, whatever it might be, PTOs, and I think we should have a much more broader discussion about, um, how to use those funds, if that's gonna be the case. I have an issue against waiving fees this year, but I think what, this is the kind of thing that we need to do is not do things based on one thing, but en- engage everyone in the school system uh, i- i- into a discussion about exactly how we should. Maybe there are other ideas about how we could use some of those funds. And I think one of the areas is, you know, here's the state saying, uh, Desi saying, well, everybody's gonna be remote. Everybody's gonna be in-person learning and they're not gonna allow it. However, uh, the ESER funds, the federal government, allow for, for students to do, uh, to learn remotely. So there's another difference of opinion here. So I think we need a more broader discussion about how to use those funds.
I think that we certainly can talk about, um, whether we waive fees for this year or not. Um, and again, in past years, we've always allowed anybody who was on free reduced lunch or had any kind of personal situation, uh, to, you know, waive those fees for those participants. Um, so I just wanna make sure the public is aware that we've always been very conscious of making sure that everyone is able to pay regardless, I mean, play regardless, or participate in whatever activity regardless of their ability to pay. And what also would come under that would be the busing fees and.
Move the question, can we move the question for executive session?
So, sure, so this is something that maybe we can just follow up on for the next, um, school committee meeting and have a, a more broader discussion, um, about fees in general. All right, I need a motion, um.
Motion to go on executive session.
Under chapter thirty-nine to discuss, um, personnel issues. And we'll have to return in about a second.
Second.
All right, it's gonna be a voice vote. Mike?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. Um, so our meeting, um, at this point is closed to the general public. We're gonna close out of our Zoom and open up our Google Meet's. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.